All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and ask Selectman Kylie to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up on our agenda is Wednesday's pet. It is, I've been informed that the pet we plan to display today in hopes that it would be adopted by one of our residents was in fact adopted yesterday.[65.64][65.64](Laughter).[66.64][66.64](Applause). I believe that means former First Selectman Sherri Stenick is still undefeated in her efforts to find homes for every pet. So this, now she's finding them before we get them on display here, so she's getting better. So moving on, next item up on the agenda or to consider and act upon the minutes of regular meeting from April 22, 2015, may I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Any discussion or edits to the minutes? All right, so hearing none, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The minutes pass. We have a few recognitions. I would like to take a moment and just announce for everybody that Teacher Appreciation Week started this week. It's time to recognize and thank our hard-working teachers, staff, and volunteers who work hard every day to help our students succeed both in and out of the classroom. It's not too late to get something that says, "Thank you for a job well done." We'd like to help make the 2015 Teacher Appreciation Week special. Don't delay, get out and thank your teacher today. And it's great and very fortuitous that the first item up for recognition is recognition of Eagle Hill School, Southport, celebrating their 30th anniversary. And I'd like to ask the headmaster to take a moment at the mic and fill us in on a few things.
Well, first, thank you, First Selectmen and the Board of Selectmen for having us.
If you could just announce your name and position so everybody at home knows who you are.
Great. So my name is Benjamin Powers and I am the headmaster at Eagle Hill, Southport School. And again, I'd like to thank you, the Board of Selectmen and First Selectman Tetra for having us here and recognizing us for our 30 years of service in the community. Thirty years ago, the, what is now the Eagle Hill, Southport School was actually the old Pequot School Building, which was the local Southport Elementary School. And it had actually turned into the Board of Ed Offices for Fairfield. And then the Board of Ed outgrew that building and it was vacant. And a phenomenal group of Southport residents got together and formed the Southport Conservancy, and that's where we began 30 years ago. And we are, we are a school who helps kids who have failed to thrive and have struggled in more traditional learning environments. We work with kids with language-based learning disabilities and ADHD. And we have had tremendous success helping thousands of families through our school, our summer program, our after-school tutoring. And it's been through the partnership with the community that that's been made possible, from using the fields in town to, you know, to all the support. So we thank, we thank Fairfield for the support and making that a reality, and we're so thrilled to be celebrating our 30th year here.
Wow, and it's been great to have you as part of our community. Again, part of what we've attempted to do at the start of our Board of Selectment meetings is introduce different not-for-profits in our community and give our entire community a chance to share in all the good works that you do. And certainly Eagle Hill School has been part of that. It's been a real pleasure of mine in getting to know you and your friends down at the school better. We do have a proclamation to acknowledge what you've done, and I'd like to take a moment and read that. "From the town of Fairfield, whereas the town of Fairfield congratulates Eagle Hill, Southport, on celebrating its 30th anniversary this year. And whereas Eagle Hill, Southport is located in the former Pequot School Building on the same site where Southport's Elementary School and Community Center had stood since 1855. Years after Pequot closed in 1972, the Southport Conservancy, which hoped to preserve the unique New England character of the town, acquired the historic building and leased it to a new school, Eagle Hill, Southport, in 1985. And whereas Eagle Hill, Southport was funded by a group of dedicated educators from Eagle Hill Greenwich School who were inspired to form a new autonomous school in Southport with a well-trained and caring faculty who focus on every student using engaging, multisensory, and evidence-based approaches to help children with learning disabilities develop a foundation of skills, gain an understanding of their abilities, and prepare for a more traditional program. And whereas, the students who attend Eagle Hill, Southport, receive a well-rounded and excellent education. When a student at Eagle Hill doesn't understand something, the question is why rather than why not? The school utilizes the strengths of each student to help them look at situations from unique perspectives, solve problems using creative strategies, and think differently. The school aims to enhance self-esteem, self-advocacy, and motivation, and teach core values such as teamwork, creativity, curiosity, and resiliency. And whereas Eagle Hill, Southport prides itself on bringing out students' talents, building a foundation of skills, using best practices, and evolutionary advances in curriculum. And whereas the school emphasizes academic, social, and athletic skill development, as well as confidence-building advocacy skills, and a strong work ethic, each student's program is individualized and includes a mix of academic classes, tutorials, extracurricular activities that reflect the child's diagnosed needs and unique learning profile. Now therefore, I, Michael C. Tetra, First Selectman of the town of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim 2015 as Eagle Hill, Southport Year. Congratulations."[442.21][442.21](Applause). Mr. Powers, do you have anything to add that wasn't covered in the proclamation?
No, I think you've covered it.[453.31][453.31](Laughter). I would just like to say I have four friends with me here today, friends of the school. We have our co-chair of the board, Janet Brogan. We have our Director of Development and current parent, Zibby Perkins. We have our Director of Admission, Samantha Berg. And we have one of our former students who's now one of the educators at Eagle Hill, Jackie Habistro.
Wow, fantastic. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you for your help.
Thank you.
To my colleagues, do you have anything to add? What you said.
Mr. Powers, I just want to congratulate you and your team on your 30th anniversary, and thank you for being an educational partner in our town for three decades. We certainly appreciate your teachers, your staff, and everything you do, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I'll echo that. Congratulations on 30 years. I've heard wonderful things about Eagle Hill, and I think we're very fortunate in this town to have such a tremendous resource for our children, our parents, our educators, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And if we could have a moment for a formal proclamation presentation?
Go ahead.
Thank you. to the family?[560.77][560.77](Laughter).
So my wife Kristen is--
Oh, at the mic, please.[564.41][564.41](Laughter). Come on, you got dad due--
Actually, this is, I'll just tell you very quickly, this is actually an exciting thing at the school. We're having a competition where the children can submit suggestions for the name of our fourth child, who will be a baby girl, and my wife is due May 13, so we're really on the final countdown here, so, thank you.
All the best to you and your wife and your family.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, everybody.[591.04][591.04](Applause).
Okay, next up, we have an announcement on Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee announcing the Mayor's Challenge. Who's here to speak today? If you could come up, please. Introduce yourself to the Board. Billison on the Mayor's Challenge.
Okay. My name is Keith Gallinelli. I'm the Chair of the Town of Fairfield Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. I'm here joined today by Betsy Gardner and Don Hyman, who are two of my other members. We have a nine-member team that was formed by the Board of Selectmen a few months ago, so we're a little bit younger than the Eagle Hill School. But I'm here to announce today that Fairfield, Connecticut, is joining the U.S. Department of Transportation's Mayor's Challenge for Safer People and Safer Streets. Back in January of 2015, Secretary Anthony Fox of the DOT is challenging city leaders to raise the bar for bicycle and pedestrian safety by joining a year-long Mayor's Challenge for Safer People and Safer Streets. So we are now one of 230 other cities in America that is going to be doing this. And basically, the challenge is having a local action team, which is our group, that's been appointed to really advance the safety and accessibility goals listed below, and I'm just going to mention a couple of the things. Basically, what this entails is that we are going to do seven things over the course of the year. One is to take a complete streets approach. This has to do with making sure that everybody who uses the roads and streets in our town can use them in the most safe manner. So it doesn't matter if you're walking, you're biking, you're using buses for transportation or for cars, that you can use our roads effectively. And really, our goal is to try to reduce and completely eliminate any injuries or fatalities that may occur on our roads, and unfortunately, just recently, there's been a couple of more, and we'd like to make sure that this is at zero and stays there for the foreseeable future. The other thing, number two, is to identify and address barriers to make streets safe and convenient for all road users, including people of all ages, especially children and abilities, and those using assistive mobility devices. The third is to gather and track biking and walking data across our town. Fourth is to use designs that are appropriate to the context of the street and its uses. Fifth, take advantage of opportunities to create and complete bicycle-pedestrian networks through maintenance. Six, improve walking and biking safety laws and regulations. And seven is to educate and enforce the proper road use behavior by everyone, doesn't matter who you are using the streets. So yeah, that's basically what we're going to be doing. Mr. Tetra has been graciously allowed us to join this challenge. It's a really wonderful group of cities and towns, and basically, the idea is to share information of what people are doing successfully. I've been involved with several conference calls and webinars from cities like San Francisco, down in Florida, and Texas, and Dallas, and New York, and a lot of different places, smaller towns, larger towns, see what they're doing, try to not reinvent the wheel every time. Also, just really quickly, our group has just, we have several proposed new bicycle and pedestrian routes in the city that we'd like to see happen. We just had a library-to-library bicycle ride on April 19th, and went very, very well. And we're going to be having a forum next week in Bridgeport. The city managers from Norwalk, Westport, Fairfield, Bridgeport, and advocacy groups like ourselves are going to be coming together to talk about different networks that we can do, and one of our goals is to redesign Route 1 for the entire length, to have a complete streets approach. So you'll be hearing more from us in the future, so, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and thank you for your work on this. We had just kind of gotten your committee off and running. This initiative came along. For me, my take on this is this is a very important initiative. What we have to learn to do is learn to live, walk, bike, and drive together. This is New England, so we can't exactly go out and redesign our roads and make them wider, bigger, or, so we have to live within the existing space. So we have more vehicles, in terms of people, bikes, and cars, in the same space, fewer horses these days--
That's true.
--but more vehicles nonetheless, and as you pointed out, we have to do that safely. We've had some accidents recently, and I'm very impressed that you've reached out as part of this program to share best practices with other towns. We don't have to reinvent the wheel, we don't have to do it all on our own, but we do have to make sure that we keep everybody safe as we're doing this. It's more than just painting a line on the road. So I want to thank you for helping lead us in the right direction and both keep our community healthier and safer as you're doing that. So, and my colleagues, would you care to comment?
Sure, I'm, this is great, I'm glad to hear about this. Does this challenge just go on and on and on, or is there a set time period?
It's a one-year--
Let me rephrase that, she wants to know when we win.
Yes.
Well, and that was my second question. Are we, do we have metrics that we're working towards, or is it more information?
It's a one-year program, and I have a feeling that it's not going to be just one year and done.
Yeah.
It's, the idea is, they want to kick this off, get it started, have a number of these conferences, and then hopefully, and I believe next March, have a meeting in Washington of all the different cities, people from these towns that are doing things like this to celebrate some of the accomplishments, and also to make sure that we can continue doing the things that have been started, because a lot of these things will not happen in one year's time. It will take some time.
Sure, so you'll get key learnings, build upon those, and then maybe set new challenge areas.
Exactly.
That sounds great. And then, just in terms of how you're going to gather and track the biking and walking data, how, how will that work exactly?
That is something, again, a little bit new to some of this, but through, I was just on this call yesterday, and one of the things that San Francisco did was they used people who were already collecting data. For example, the police department. Every time there's an accident, of course, there's an accident report, and having a list of where, how these things were caused. For example, was this somebody turning left at a signal? Was this somebody turning right at a stop sign? All of these things are in existence, so basically, reaching out to the people that are doing this already and trying to gather this data and be a central source for this. The other way that they did this as well is they used the hospitals. Hospitals are collecting data, because if there is an injury or a fatality, of course, the hospitals will be doing a report on this as well. So some of the things are in existence already. Other ways of tracking data, again, will cost money, and this will be putting in monitors to find out who's walking, who's biking, who's using these roads, and that's something that needs to be looked at. But again, getting the conversation started is kind of one of our goals.
I would think it'd be interesting if we could track who's walking in Fairfield, who's biking. We're doing a walking program at work right now for wellness, and we're wearing pedometers, which never really worked, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
And we have to self-report how many steps we've taken, and it's a challenge as well.
Also, I mean, we're gathering a network of volunteers, and it doesn't cost anything to have somebody volunteer and sit in an intersection for a day and just count--
Right.
--the number of people who are biking and walking and running by.
That's right.
And it's just a wonderful way to start tracking data, because there is, there are places along the--
Powers.
Oh, and our survey as well. You want, maybe you can fill this, fill everybody in, if you mind. I can't, I can't read this writing, sorry.[1056.23][1056.23](Laughter).
Hi. We did a very simple survey--
So Hyman, if you could step up to the mic and announce your name.
I'm Don Hyman, I'm also on this committee with everybody else. We did a very simple survey on April 19th of the 41 or so riders who showed up for our library-to-library kind of demonstration pilot ride. We were testing out one of the routes that we were, we were going to see. So from that group of participants, 41 riders, we were able to get, we asked six questions, and we were able to get some pretty qualitative information, if not, you know, the largest sampling. The people that were in the program were people who were most likely to use this, use the route. I was pleased to see that we asked the question, "If circumstances allowed, would you consider riding your bike along this route instead of driving your car to travel to or from the downtown of Fairfield?" Eighty-two percent of the participants said yes. To me, that's a very encouraging number. You know, yes, it's an isolated group, but still, it's encouraging. Everybody was very favorable about the route itself. A hundred percent said they enjoyed the ride. Ninety-five percent said they thought the route was safe, which was very good to hear. And ninety-five percent of that same group said the town should go ahead and, all through the various other commissions that are involved, including yourselves, approve this as a route, do the signage and the road marking that's necessary to make this one of the corridors that we would travel. So while that's a small survey, it is data that we have that shows that what we propose to do is appreciated and valuable and perceived to be safe by the people who would use it. So it's that kind of research.
Very good, very good.
And also, next, May 19th, actually, there's a group of people biking to Hartford with Kristen McCarthy-Behe and others, and going up to the Capitol to support some of the things that are going on up there. So if anybody wants to bike to Hartford with us, feel free.
That's a long, long ride.
It's not so bad, actually. I just biked to Brooklyn last, last weekend--
There's your--
--and did the Ride of the Five Prose, and that was a wonderful ride.
That's great.
Wow. But Hartford's all downhill from here, right?
Hartford's uphill from here, but there's a nice bike trail that goes directly from New Haven from Hartford, so you don't really, you're not on the roads very often, so it's quite a nice, nice route, so.
Selectman Kylie?
Just quickly, yes, Keith, thank you to your committee for all the work you're doing. It certainly is much appreciated. I just wanted to quickly follow up on Mr. Tetra's comments about public safety and sharing the roads. And I know it's early in your tenure, but can you just share some thoughts how you are either able to or plan to work with the police in public works, whether it's in data collection or partnering on, you know, safety ideas and issues like that that can broaden the scope of your work and increase the safety for the entire town?
I mean, as you know, we have one, one route on Mill Plain Road that's already in effect, also in Southport, going down towards the Pequot Library in Westport. These are areas where people, by the beach as well, these are not approved routes yet, but these are places where people are always out biking, running, and walking.
Right.
It's just a natural place to go. A lot of these places are flat, the roads are a little bit wider, and so we're working within our group to make sure we make the right connections. We have some street signs that are going to be going up, donated by sound cyclists, that say basically there's a three-foot requirement to be from a cyclist. Just spoke with some of the people in the town, and they're going to be putting these signs up in the next few days, hopefully, and they will be on these type of routes. Again, following the Police Department and requesting that they can do some enforcement activities, especially in times like the weekends when people are out there biking, walking, and running, to make sure that people are slowing down in these areas. So there's a lot of things that can be done, and a lot of it is just, our group is really the core that wants to try to collect and gather this data and be the advocates within the community to support the efforts that are going on, so.
It's a great effort, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, okay? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Good luck.
Thank you.[1313.63][1313.63](Applause).
All right, next up on the agenda, we've got item seven, a couple of resignations, and these are for information only. From the Economic Development Commission, Christopher J. LaSala, unaffiliated, 115 Somerset Avenue, whose term was 11/11 to 11/16. His resignation date is April 1st, 2015, so we have an opening for someone who's interested. Shellfish Commission, Catherine Rayner Katropa, Republican, 1087 Bronson Road, term 11/12 through 11/17, resignation date April 20th, 2015, so we have an opening also on the Shellfish Commission. Next item up, a new addition to our town, Conservation Director Brian Carey. Brian, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Brian, come on up front. Please hit the mic and, of course, first of all, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right, we're thrilled that you joined our town, and we've heard, obviously, great things about you, which is why we extended the offer.
Thank you.
We were thrilled that you accepted. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself and perhaps maybe a few impressions of your first days on the job?
Lifelong resident in Fairfield, born and raised, still live here, never plan on leaving. Worked in Stratford for the past seven years. Before that, was environmental consultant in a couple firms, national firms throughout the Northeast. Stratford, I was pretty much, I was Conservation Director over there. A little bit of a different focus on things, a lot more brownfields, but still wetlands and flood control. So I'm just excited to bring, you know, my perspective to a department that's got really the longest history and legacy in the state of Connecticut. I mean, Fairfield has always really been a model and a, and at the forefront of environmental conservation. You know, even when you go up to the DEP, they're, you know, when you look through their records, they are basically looking at Fairfield at some things in the 70s before even the DEP was really establishing themselves in the early 80s. So it's really a, it's really a dream come true to take this position. I've been here since Friday. It's, it's been a learning curve, I will say. I have some big shoes to fill. Tom Stanky was an amazing man, and I hope I can add up to that. But then again, I'm not Tom Stanky, so I will be bringing my own unique perspective to the position, and I'm working diligently already to try to come up to speed as quickly as possible. But it is, it is going to be a challenge to replace a person like Tom, 42 years, it's definitely a long time, and he's left volumes of information. So the historical perspective of the Conservation Department in this town, I know, will always be intact. So I just want to say thank you to the Board and thank you to the residents, and I look forward to serving the town and for the foreseeable future.
All right, great. Any comments from my colleagues?
I'd like to say congratulations--
Thank you.
--and welcome.
Thank you.
If you can just give us an idea, very briefly, if you've already got the job--
Yep.
--the main challenges and opportunities you see in the department.
I think streamlining some of the processes, just so that's a little bit more friendly to the residents. That's one thing I can see that probably needs to be done, more, more interaction with the residents. You know, the other thing is kind of looking at some of the budgeting numbers as far as permanent costs. I know that's been an issue in the past, so that's something we're going to look at. And then again, just, just streamlining the processes. The department is well-run, it has been well-run. I mean, for what the Conservation Department has done for this town has been pretty, like I said, it has been a model for all the towns. So I think if, you know, obviously, costs are always an issue, but streamlining the process to make sure that it's more user-friendly, I think, is a, is a major step that we need to go forward.
Okay. Mr. Carey, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And welcome. You're right, you do have big shoes to fill, and conservation is a very important issue for all Fairfielders. We take it very seriously. Mr. Stanky certainly left his stamp on this town, and he will continue to do so going forward in some fashion, I suspect. You have a great background, and--
Thank you.
--it was a pleasure connecting with you last week, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much for joining us--
Thank you.
--and again, welcome to the team.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next up, we have a series of appointments for Fair TV. I'll look to my colleagues. Take these one at a time or as a group? Do you have any preference or guidance?
Is everybody here?
Group, okay?
Group's fine.
Okay. And let's get these all in front of us. To here, consider and act upon the following appointments to the Fair TV Commission. This requires unanimous vote of the Board of Selectmen, and then, in addition, a majority vote of approval by the RTM. We have Alexis P. Harrison, Republican, 240 Melanie Lane, for a term of July 15 to July 16. Robert M. Jemison, from, a Republican, 501 Wilson Street, for a term of 715 to 717. Tracy G. Minsky, Democrat, 1012 Mill Plain Road, for a term of 715 to 717. And Jim Quinn, Democrat, excuse me, James Quinn--
I'll take Jim.
--I apologize. Democrat, 508 Wilson Street, for a term of 715 to 718. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Let me just qualify, one, the terms are different. We did actually randomly pick the terms. There will be three-year terms, but when we're starting out, we had to stagger them. So you'll notice that we have one one-year term, two two-year terms, a three-year term. We'll eventually have five members on this board. It's per the recent ordinance, we have two Democrats, two Republicans, and an unaffiliated. We are looking for an unaffiliated member for this, so if there's somebody out there in town that would be interested, and they are not a member of either political party or any political party, we would very much appreciate them contacting the First Selectman's So with that, I believe everybody's here.
Yeah.
Mrs. Robert, Tracy, and Jim. Any questions from the Board?
I have a question. I don't know if you want to come up to the mic, but I'd ask the same question. What drives your interest and some challenges and opportunities you see as you form this new commission?
If you wouldn't mind, why don't, if you're okay, why don't all four come up, and then you can kind of answer that one at a time.
Thank you for having me, Tracy Minsky, on the line on Mill Plain Road. I look forward to hopefully being appointed to the Fair TV Commission. I'm hoping to learn a lot about the town as I do it, but also-- I'm hoping to learn a lot about the town as I do it, but also really to engage people. If they can't make a meeting, if they hope to get to know more of what's going on, get involved, get to know what Fair TV is, get to know how you can be part of it, and I'm excited for that. I think there will be challenges, as some people might want coverage, that may not happen, or they don't want coverage of things that we may find important, and we'll have to see what the people ask for. Okay?
Hi. Thank you very much for the opportunity for me to continue to serve on this now full commission. It's been, I've been on the ad hoc committee for about two and a half years, it seems much longer than that, but we've shepherded a process, a very important process that you appointed us to do, which was to establish an ordinance and a set of laws for the town. And that alone has been a big challenge, but it's been a great process and I look forward to continuing to serve on this commission because I love this town, I'm from this town, and I think it offers an important opportunity for all people to watch the government at its best, at, you know, fulfilling its duty. And I think it's an important thing to offer the citizens. As far as challenges, I think the only thing I see is being the first commission doing this. I think anytime that you're the first, you have a set of challenges ahead of you, but I think we're all really good people, committed people, and I think we can all, we can work it out. And thank you again.
Thank you.
I'm Jim or James Quinn, I'll take either one. I am a lifelong resident of Fairfield, a graduate of Andrew Ward High School, Fairfield University, and Quinnipiac Law School. I've been privileged to work with the Judicial Department for the state of Connecticut for the last 20 years as an attorney. I love this town as well. I, for me, transparency is the key. I like to make sure that everyone here in this town has the opportunity to understand and see what's going on, on every side of government. As for challenges, evolving technology, not only what we see, but what method in which we see it. That's one thing I like to concentrate on when I get on the commission is to see how we get our information and what medium.
Hi, I'm McKay Gemmison. It's funny, Jim and I are actually, we live across the street from each other and we couldn't be more different in the sense of he's lived here his entire life and I moved here a year ago, which is one of the reasons why I'm very interested in this. And first, I just want to thank Board of Selectmen. Everybody's been incredibly welcoming to me in my first year here. My wife and I, we had our third child and we were living in the city, we ran out of space and we were struggling to find a town and fell in love with Fairfield immediately and it's been everything that we've hoped for. I really took an interest in this for a couple of reasons. First and foremost, my background is working with the media and I felt like this was a really interesting fit. Second of all, I've worked a lot in politics in my life as well as in business and I also agree, I think transparency and openness of government is vital for an engaged electorate and citizenship. And in terms of the opportunity and the challenges, I actually see them one as the same. I think public broadcast is, you know, it was a 20th century invention and we live in the 20th century, 21st century today, and that's a challenge in the sense of I think there's expectations and there's certainly a status quo in terms of how this is done and it's an opportunity because the technology available to us today is rapidly changing. How broadcast operates is completely different and I'm excited about the opportunity to be really creative and infusing a new way potentially of bringing information and engagement to the town of Fairfield.
Kevin?
I just want to thank everyone of you for volunteering. You're a super group. You have great backgrounds, you all bring a different perspective to the commission and I'm confident that you will do a great job. I really liked a lot of the comments about government, good government and transparency and communication because those things go together, right? The better you communicate, the more transparent you are, the better job you do with, you know, broadcasting, the better our government gets. More, more people pay attention, more people are engaged, and it raises the water level for everyone involved. So it's very important and I want to thank you for stepping up to volunteer.
Thank you.
And I want to echo Slip and Kylie's remarks. I think that when you talk about democracy, it's based on the principle or assumption of an informed electorate. And there's probably nothing more important to establishing an informed electorate than Fair TV in our community. We've certain, there are other media that have varying degrees of activity among our residents. I think Fair TV has certainly been something that's been growing consistently over the years and I consistently have people talk about what they saw on Fair TV, where they saw it, or you're even hearing it now where if you miss this, please go to Fair TV, go to see it on demand. So the ability to watch it on TV or watch it on your computer on demand after, if you miss something as part of that, I think has been tremendously helpful to our citizens in terms of understanding this process of government and understanding the issues so they can feel more informed. It's, in a real sense, establishes a virtual town hall meeting because literally everybody in town can watch the meeting take place and participate to that degree. So again, I want to thank you for your interest and very much appreciate your hard work and dedication in putting this through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
Ready?
We are.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. You're onto the RTM. Congratulations. Item 10 on our agenda is to hear a report from the Southwest Regional Mental Health Ms. Houston, if you'd come up to the podium and give us a brief update.
Sure. My name is Cheryl Houston and I am formerly the Town Representative and presently the Deputy Director at the Southwest Regional Mental Health Board. We're an oversight and advocacy organization. We work to fill gaps in service for people with mental illness and their families. I'm also the President of the Fairfield Chapter of NAMI and I am also a co-founder of Be Stigma Free and we work to raise awareness of conditions that are not understood, misunderstood, and stigmatized. And I'm here because May is Mental Health Month and so I'd like to talk about encouraging everyone to check out HealthyMindCT.org. What we've put together is a calendar because we kind of have oversight of the roughly Fairfield, southwestern Connecticut. We bring together organizations who are doing all kinds of events to promote awareness about mental wellness, mental health in general, mental illness, the resources that are available. We have over 70 events on the May calendar and so we encourage everyone to go and check it out. They're all over the, all over the area, including here in Fairfield. Southwest has had a long partnership with Fairfield and we want to first and most importantly thank you guys for a continued relationship. Mr. Tetra, every time we meet, challenges me and my boss Margaret and says, okay, I like what you're doing, but do more for the town. And so we have been in the high schools for a couple of days last month, will be in the high schools for a couple of days again this month, making presentations. We also have two interns from the high school, from Ludlow, who will be coming to help us out in the offices for the next three or four weeks. And so we're working diligently and not just here, you never ask for just here, but throughout the area that we serve. And we've also secured a donation for the employees in Fairfield, those who were selected to take advantage of mental health first aid training. And we've secured the funds that were needed to underwrite that. It's kind of our way of showing our appreciation for the support that we've gotten from you guys over the years. And I think that's it. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for what you do to support us so that we can do what we're doing. As the, as the head of NAMI here in town, every month we have a support group and we hear about the extraordinary needs that people have and that families face and with your support, hopefully we're making a difference. So thank you.
Good. In recognition of the work you've done, we've got a proclamation for you here from the town. Whereas every May, the United States calls upon citizens, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness, reducing stigma and discrimination, and promoting appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illnesses. And whereas, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. And whereas, there is a proven connection between good mental health and overall personal health, good mental health is critical to the well-being of our families, communities, schools, and businesses. And whereas, mental illnesses affect almost every family in America with 18.6% of Connecticut residents suffering from a mental illness each year. And whereas, people with mental illnesses recover if given the proper services and support in their communities. And whereas, more than half of adults and young people who have mental health disorders in Connecticut are not receiving the help they need. And whereas, stigma and fear of discrimination keep many who would benefit from mental health services from seeking help. And whereas, research shows that the most effective way to reduce stigma is through raising awareness about mental illness and stressing the importance of mental wellness. Greater public awareness about mental illnesses can change negative attitudes and behaviors towards people with mental illnesses. And whereas, people with mental illnesses are valued members of our families and our communities who make important contributions to our society. And whereas, citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in Fairfield can help increase awareness and understanding of mental health and provide or assist in the appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Now therefore, I, Michael C. Tetra, First Selectman of the town of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim May 2015 as Mental Health Awareness Month throughout the town of Fairfield. Congratulations.
Congratulations so much. We appreciate it.
Any comments from my colleagues?
Well, I just want to say thank you for everything you do, raising awareness, reducing stigma, impressing the importance of good mental health, as well as helping people that have a mental illness. It all adds up to a better society and the work you do is wonderful and much appreciated.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate that. Thanks.
And I couldn't agree more. You do tremendous work, such important work. I love the fact that you were in the high schools because I think, you know, young people need to understand what mental health and mental illness are and learn to recognize what it is, learn to treat people who are different with dignity and respect. That educational portion of it is so important. So congratulations, you're doing great work, very important work.
I'm lucky, it's, it's great. I enjoy it. So, thank you.
And if we can take a moment and have a formal presentation of the proclamation?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right. That's yours, Tiki?
Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Our pleasure. I'm sorry. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Have a very nice evening. You too. Thank you so much.
All right. To hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Human Services Commission. Resolve that the building at 100 Mona Terrace shall be named the Bigelow Center for Senior Activities as of July 1st, 2015. May I have a motion to accept?
So move.
A second.
Second.
All right. Ms. Gignac or Mr. Carter, do you have a few words for us?
Thank you, Mike. Bruce Carter, Chair of the Human Services Commission, and I see I have some of the members of the commission here I'd like to recognize right away. We've got Nancy Legari, we've got Sal McCowan, and we have, see, just like that. Linda DiLorenzo. Linda DiLorenzo. But just like that. And also we have Dr. Richard Anzalas here, who's Chair of the Fairfield Seniors Association. We have given some consideration to changing the name of the center, a fairly simple act, but it's really an honor to, to give honor and to give thanks to Cindy Bigelow for spending 27 years of helping the senior center in innumerable ways. And she's just, just been terrific. And I think this year with, with the new leadership and the guidance she's given and Terry Gignac, our, our executive director here, we just realized that, how much she's done. And it came up in the board meeting, we had a good committee get-together to do the renaming and we resolved and we asked that the center be renamed the Bigelow Center for Senior Activities. It's a small way to thank her and for an awful lot that's been done. And she's just been so helpful, so long, it's, it's time and we think it's, it's, it's the right way to honor her. And so we're asking that you approve the resolution, change the name.
Thank you. Any questions from my colleagues?
I think, I like the, the idea that you're framing this with the time is right because you have had changes. I think you're embarking this, I'm going to get the name right now, if we approve this, the Bigelow Center for Senior Activities. It's really, you're going into a new era, really, in terms of motivation of all your volunteers. The Human Services Commission is doing great work. Your, I mean, just your membership is growing, you've got Terry on board. I mean, so many great things are happening at the senior center, so it's, or, I'm sorry, I'm going to keep calling it that until I get used to it.
You haven't voted yet.
I haven't voted yet, exactly. That it's really, it's so timely and I think it's a way to kind of launch yourself. You can launch the new name and then launch all that you're doing and kind of grow that awareness even more. So I think it's a terrific way, as you said, to honor Ms. Bigelow and all that she's done and to look to the future as well in terms of what you can do to grow even further together.
Mr. Carter?
Thank you. I completely agree. Thank you for those kind words. There isn't enough praise to go around in a situation like this, the commission, the volunteers, the staff, and everyone who contributes to the senior center for a few more moments. And, you know, Fairfield is blessed to have a lot of really, really great families that have done things for our town over the years. And I've had the pleasure of meeting many of them and I've had the, the pleasure and the honor of meeting Cindy Bigelow many years ago and working with her on many issues over the years. It would be hard to find a person who's been more dedicated to our town and a family who has done more for our town over the last 20 years than the Bigelow family and I can think of nothing more honorable than to rename the senior center in her name. So thank you for thinking of that and for bringing it forward and it's just one of those votes you can't wait to make.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much for your support on this. By the way, I was Chair of the Human Services Commission about a quarter of a century ago when I was about 11. And, and to see the dramatic difference of the activity of the board, the Terry and our new position, which really, which has just been a godsend, thank you for that. It's just, it's just really exploded in its impact and the services to the public and we're very excited to be a part of this. I think I could speak for all the board members and Dr. you too. It's just been exciting and I'm looking forward to a great, you know, terrific growth and we're going to have a great party with Cindy and obviously you're all invited, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Just a couple of follow-on thoughts. One, I'm very supportive of this for several reasons. One is that we did a survey of seniors about two to three years ago and one of the things that came out of there was that when asked, you know, why don't you use the senior center more or what would it take to use the senior center? One of the feedback points was that it would be nice if it wasn't called the senior center because most seniors don't envision themselves as seniors. So that not calling it the senior center would make it more attractive place to go. I like the, what I'm going to call the compromise. One is that honoring Cindy Bigelow for all of her work and much of it out of the spotlight. One of the things that I've noticed about the senior center is where there's a need, Cindy Bigelow seems to pop up with an answer or a solution. And time after time, without the press, without the support, without anybody having to beg her to do it, she's there to help out whenever she sees the need to help, as she calls them, her seniors. And I think that is just phenomenal that we are recognizing her. On the other hand, I'm also sensitive to the fact that we don't want the seniors thinking we're taking their center away. So by keeping the name senior in there under senior activities, I think we're also reinforcing to the seniors that this is a home, there is a place in Fairfield. And I am phenomenally impressed that we've gone from 400 members just a couple years ago to over 2,000 today. I think that's a tribute to all the fine work, the great programs, and that you're establishing value in our community for seniors and a purpose and a place for seniors to be in our community. And I want to thank you for all of your effort, work for you, Terry, you and your staff and the entire commission in terms of helping out with that. So I think this is just a, the right move, as has been said earlier, at the right time for a host of reasons. So I thank you for bringing it before us today. Any further comments or questions from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none? Are we ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you and we look forward to the invite to the dedication ceremony. Thank you, and we look forward to the invite to the dedication ceremony. All right. Next up, an update report from the Penn Field Building Committee. Mr. Bradley, the podium is yours. Take your time. We'll wait for you to come back. Did you want to comment on these sets of plans? We just, I didn't know if you saw the extra ones up there.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name's Jim Bradley. I'm the Chair of the Penn Field Building Committee, and I'm here this afternoon to provide a brief, I hope brief, briefing about the status of the project, which seems to be going on and on and on. I have presentation materials here which I passed out, and sorry that they didn't get to you earlier, but they're really here, they're really, they really have been handed out as to provide you with an example of what the committee's been doing, more than to go through them in detail. Project status, the Penn Field Building Committee continues to meet twice a month with special meetings called if required to consider any critical or important time-sensitive issues. We have two new members, and thank you very much for bringing them forward to the Board of Selectmen. Steve Penello is a PE and David Ziff, who is a CPA. They're great additions. Steve with his impressive project management and consulting background, and Dave with his financial and accounting expertise. Earlier this spring, the committee authorized retaining an electrical and mechanical consulting engineers to inspect the building's systems and existing conditions, and to identify and document any repairs, modifications, or upgrades related to code or damage issues. The committee retained the services of a landscape architect to design and propose a phased landscape plan to be implemented based on budget priorities and funding limits. The design team also investigated and published recommendations regarding the gathering room acoustics, which has been an issue in the past. The committee cooperated with the Town Department of Public Works regarding retaining Robertius' Associates Coastal Engineers to develop a study regarding future flood control options and how they may impact the site and pavilion facility in the future. The study has been completed with preliminary findings shared with the Department of Public Works, Town Engineering, and the Flood and Erosion Control Board. The proposed Penn Field project will not interfere with or preempt future flood control options. The project will go through internal code, internal town code review on May 19th. So, the code officials and other interested parties will meet with the project architect and construction manager and go through a typical code review. The Penn Field project design and construction documents are 50% complete, with final drawings and specifications due on May 28th. The committee has reviewed the 50% complete construction documents on April 30th and authorized the architect to complete design and specification documents. The project bid phase starts May 28th with bids due on June 18th. The guaranteed maximum price for the project will be prepared by the construction manager, Shawnit, for the committee approval on July 9th. The Penn Field project schedule, which is, has been handed out, is a little overwhelming, but it reflects a July 10 authorization to proceed and start date, and a May 1, 2016 completion date. I also circulated a draft 90-day startup schedule, which provides an overview regarding the startup task, seeing how's this project's going to start right after 4th of July. This doc, the 90-day startup schedule, just give you an idea of what's going to happen on site and what kind of activity is going to take place. The project construction cost estimate was last updated April 9th and will be updated again on March 14th, utilizing the recent 50% complete construction documents. A fourth estimate at about 90, 80 or 90% complete, construction documents complete is desirable, however, given the project's schedule, we don't have enough time to get that final 80 or 90% document estimate. The project remains on budget and assumes a $500,000 total project contingency, representing approximately 11% of the cost of construction, an appropriate amount given about where we are at this time and the risks on the project. The budget remains tight with the highest risk in the areas of the building leveling and the possibility of unknown damage to the building and building systems. The final project drawings and specifications will reflect alternate adds and deducts with values to be identified at bid time. This will allow budget flexibility at the time the guaranteed maximum price is developed by the construction manager and approved by the committee. That said, the, I have a complete set of the 50% construction documents with me, which I'm sure you don't necessarily want to see because it's about 60 pages. But I did ask the architect to pull out the, kind of the best, easiest drawings to look at and explain. The cover sheet, I have the cover sheet included only to identify the fact that we have a mechanical and plumbing engineer on board, an electrical engineer, a landscape architect, and an acoustical engineer. So this is the construction team that was put together by the committee, and just wanted to identify those particular individuals. The scale of these plans is small because the sheets are not full drawing size. The site plan is, is exactly what the Board of Selectmen and the public and the committee have seen over the past 12 months, 10 or 12 months. A couple of changes which might be of interest and will show up more in the floor plan when I get to it. The east wing is, the locker wing is back. It's smaller, but it has 197 lockers, and one of the reasons for that is we've included handicap lockers, so we lost four or five locker spaces. But it's moved back from the street, it's shorter, and it has a better elevation when we get to it, when I'll, I'll explain it to you. The approach to the pavilion now has a driveway that extends up to the kitchen area, which is going to allow better deliveries. The parking lot has a certain amount of improvement where that landscaped area was. The building is, the building comes back together, and the decks come back together in a much more compact and user-friendly way. You will see in the floor plan that the building now has a corridor that goes completely through it from one end to the other, so that you have this open feeling between the east wing and the west wing. The stairs to the beach are shown, the bulkhead is shown, the riprap protecting the bulkhead and going over towards the beach on the left and the, and joining up with the Durrell side on the right. So, not much change. It is the same building, it's going back pretty much the way it was. The east wing is just smaller and more efficient. When you look at the floor plan, you can see, I'm just going to highlight a few things. Again, this floor plan has been around before, but if you will look at the east wing with me, which is pretty simple to identify, it's the one with all the little squares and the lockers. There, the biggest, two big changes, one is that you have this 15-foot wide corridor that goes right through the building from the parking lot out to the water and the beach. It divides the east wing and the west wing, provides greater flexibility, more air, a lighter, more open, less massive look to the building. And it has distinct advantages as far as traffic flow is concerned. You'll also see that there are men's and women's toilet areas, restrooms, attached to the upper left-hand corner of the locker wing. Those are new, and they're larger. There were two smaller facilities there with one fixture each, and so now you can approach two areas of, two restroom areas from the beach. The original one, which is over by the snack bar, and this new, larger area that, over on the eastern side of the building, by the locker wing. The lockers now have the code-required handicap spaces, lockers. The restroom area in the middle of the locker room, the existing restroom area, has simply been reduced to a simple men's and women's room and three showers and a handicap shower. So, it's, it's a smaller, more compact facility, it's more attractive from the road, and we'll see that in the elevation. It has more efficient bathroom and shower facilities. It has this great area way, if you want to call it, or walkway through the building, not expanding the building in any way as far as footprint is concerned, just using space more efficiently. We had that opportunity because, as you know, the east wing is going to be taken down and rebuilt, and part of that process will include these new design features. The other area that came up in review with Parks and Rec was the whole issue related to some kind of good access to the kitchen area and storage. There were a couple of problems in there that have been solved by this driveway that you see that goes right towards, it goes directly up to the new storage area just below the title box walk-in cooler. So you'll see new storage room with an arrow. That room is new, just using existing space, and the drive access to it is, is important for convenience and access. There are fine details on this plan about the handicap access, which has been a priority. Access in general, and handicap access in particular, has been a driving force with the architect and engineer. The building itself is, is simply going back just the way it was, but in a more efficient design and traffic flow, pedestrian traffic flow. And then finally, and I'd be happy to answer questions, finally, the last page is a elevations. The south elevation, which would be going along the beach, the north elevation, which would be what you'd see from the road and parking lot. The west elevation towards Jackie Durrell and Pavilion, and the east elevation on the opposite end. The building looks a little bit different, and the architect and the committee feel a lot better. The windows were added to break up the, kind of the massiveness of the locker wing. But by and large, it's the same building. You can see that walk-through feature, which is really the only kind of innovative design change in the building. The rails, if we can afford it, the rails are going to be posts with stainless steel cable, which is the more contemporary way of putting in rails in a facility like this so that you get a full view of the water, because now the rails have to be 42 inches high, so if you're sitting there, they hit you right in the face as far as your line of sight is concerned. Porch, the decks around the, covered decks around the building are still there, the access and the walkways and stairs around the building have just basically been improved. A lot of feedback from Parks and Rec and people that have been using the building. And so, that's, that's where we are as far as the design is concerned. And just to finish my presentation, I would only comment that I have provided the Board of Selectmen with the project schedule and the 90-day schedule, only, only as a basis of reference to give you an idea about the amount of detail that the design and construction team and the committee are going into. The final document is the project budget, which remains balanced at this time. We'll be getting a new budget, a new revision in two weeks, and we're going to have to very much depend on that as we go to market. We're going to have to approve that budget as far as proceeding with the bid phase. I think the contingency is adequate. An awful lot of time and effort has gone on and gone into this planning endeavor, this pre-construction phase, and, and going back to the schedule, the schedule proves out as much as the schedule can that all the tasks are there and the allocation durations have been included that show a May 1 completion. So we're ready to go and on schedule and on budget at this time. Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Any questions from the board? Just a couple.
Please. Thank you, Mr. Bradley, for the presentation, and you've touched on a number of my questions, and thank you for that. But just, you know, back to the budget, you mentioned that you'll have a new budget in a couple of weeks.
Correct.
Do you expect any significant differences or variances between now and then, or anything material that will change?
They're only, only in the fact that the electrical and mechanical designs are now included. The, so I think you could find some, increased detail often creates increased cost, but we've talked to the construction manager about it, we've talked pretty extensively about each line item in the budget. I'm hoping that it's going to be, you know, it'll, it'll come in on budget. We have opportunities to, as a matter of fact, this budget reflects some value engineering that's already taken place as far as a different foundation style and so forth. So I think, I think it's very much under control.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll know, and we'll make adjustments accordingly.
Good. Thank you for that. And the timeline you touched upon, early May of next year, everything mother nature aside, still seems feasible?
I think, I think it looks good. I mean, we, behind the scenes, what we're finding is that the building is still repairable, that the mechanical and electrical engineer found less than we thought, that the mechanical electric engineer's specifications and drawings are going to provide better information at
And you've touched on a number of my questions, and thank you for that. But just, you know, back to the budget, you mentioned that you'll have a new budget in a couple of weeks.
Correct.
Do you expect any significant differences or variances between now and then, or anything material that will change?
They're only, only in the fact that the electrical and mechanical designs are now included. The, so I think you could find some, increased detail often creates increased cost, but we've talked to the construction manager about it. We've talked pretty extensively about each line item in the budget. I'm hoping that it's going to be, you know, it'll come in on budget. We have opportunities to, as a matter of fact, this budget reflects some value engineering that's already taken place as far as the different foundation style and so forth. So I think, I think it's very much under control.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll know, and we'll make adjustments accordingly.
Good. Thank you for that. And the timeline you touched upon, early May of next year, everything mother nature aside, still seems feasible?
I think, I think it looks good. I mean, we, behind the scenes, what we're finding is that the building is still repairable, that the mechanical electrical engineer found less than we thought, that the mechanical electric engineers' specifications and drawings are going to provide better information at bid time. So it'll take some of the what-if out of the contractors when they're bidding.
Right.
It'll be more specific. I think that the, they have a, the superintendent on this project has already been on site. He's interviewing contractors that may be interested. They're trying to increase market awareness and market interest. So far, in talking with trade contractors, nobody's come back with saying that'll never happen, or it's very expensive, or we don't want to bid this because we don't understand it.
Right.
I think the attitude is very good. It's a slow start, as you know, but I think it's gaining momentum.
Good. Specific to the trade market that you'll be going out into, I'm not sure, what is the general feel out there? Are contractors of quality, are they busier these days or less busy? Is that going to have any effect on either the bids or the timeline?
I don't think it's going to have an effect on the timeline. It always has an effect on market pricing, and who's busy and who isn't. I think that this project has a lot of interest, and it has a lot of interest because it's complicated. It's known. It's not like spread out all over the place. But I think that, yeah, there's more interest now. The state is not right on the top of everybody's list as far as construction activity is concerned. It's been a long haul, a long recovery for Connecticut. So there is, and this is public work, and this is really basically commercial work. It's kind of light commercial, but it's, so I think, yeah, I think there are a lot of people that are interested, and I think it's hitting the market at about the right time.
You do. That was one of my other questions.
Yeah. Seasonally, I think it's going to work out just fine.
That's good. A couple other kind of construction questions, if I may. It looks like, based on a quick glance at the ninety-day schedule, that we're going to be starting some work soon. And can you just talk about what effect that could have on the facility, the facility as we're currently using it, either for parking or beach access, or anything else that could be going on at the same time?
Well, we're planning to use, we've had extensive discussions with Parks and Rec and we're, and Public Works, and we're planning to utilize the parking lot immediately north of the building.
Okay.
As a staging area and construction area and so forth. And obviously, there's going to be a building move there, and the west wing is moved.
Right.
But the construction fence may get moved out just a little bit, but all the work will be confined to the immediate space around the building. We don't have to close the beach or block it off or have chain-link fence going down to the water saying you can't pass in front of the building. The work will be contained within the confines of the building, using the parking lot as a search area for staging and access.
Good. So pretty much within the area.
Yes.
That's good. And the other question that has come up a few times is the acoustics, and you touched on that. And it might be too soon to know the answer, but the acoustics in the old building weren't so great. So what types of things have you guys thought about as possibly improving them?
Well, we have a report, which I'd be happy to share with you, but the acoustical engineer has ideas about sound deadening panels and sound deadening shapes that would go in that building. And we are, we're going to incorporate it in the bid documents, but only as an alternate, so that if there is money available, we can make those improvements. Or if we want to go into contingency, we can make those improvements. But right now, on our list of priorities, it's not, it's not the top one. It's very important, but we got to get the building leveled out and brought back and finished, and then we can see about that. But we do have the information. The study did take place, and we have the documentation for it.
Good. And my last question is, and you touched on this as well, is the contingency. So far, you feel good about that? You don't feel that you're going to be too far one way or the other about that?
Ordinarily, at fifty percent, on a normal project, whatever that is, but on a normal project, at fifty percent CDs, construction documents, and that really means, I don't want to throw a lot of terms around, terms of the trade around, but construction documents are really the drawings and the specifications. They go hand in hand. You know, the book of specifications could be, on this project, two or three inches thick, and the drawings could be anywhere between sixty and a hundred pages. That, those documents are the basic directions for the project.
Okay.
So we're at a point now where fifty percent of that information has been developed in a tremendous amount of detail. There are electrical drawings, there are mechanical drawings, and so forth. So we have, we have enough detail to, to, on the fifty percent drawings, to be comfortable, not happy with, but be comfortable with eleven percent contingency on construction cost, not on the whole project, but just on construction cost. If it were a normal project, if it were a small office building for six million dollars, at this particular juncture, you'd have five to seven and a half percent. So, but, but from a conservative, looking at this project, you'd be happier with ten to fifteen percent at this point. So we're kind of in the middle.
You're in the middle. And it feels good so far?
Yeah. I think that we know the issues.
Right.
The question is, in leveling out the building, could there be a problem? And you don't know that until you start jacking it up, unfortunately.
Right.
But we're encouraged by the electrical and mechanical engineers' inspections and reports, that we have less problem with wiring and ductwork and mechanical systems than we thought.
So that's, that's a plus.
We haven't started up those mechanical systems because the building doesn't have power. But certainly gone through and looked at the issues of pipes and wires and ductwork.
Not quite as bad as it could have been?
No.
And finally, if I may, you did mention some minor adjustments to foundation. Are they significant, or could you briefly explain what they could be?
Well, the value engineering proposal for the foundations is strictly confined to, pertains to the east wing.
Okay.
And it just means that the value engineering suggestion is, instead of having concrete grate beams underneath the locker wing, you would simply have the same timber piles that you ordinarily would have for, for the concrete grate beams, but you would frame the, you would construct the framing as timber pile caps, not concrete. So it would be more like a deck or a dock than it would be a building. And underneath a light-framed, wood-framed, single-story locker room, it's, it'd be perfectly fine. As a matter of fact, it's probably, some people would consider it preferred construction. So it was, it was, either one could be done. The concrete, the engineers favored because they're conservative. And the, but the timber has been done for a hundred and fifty years. Both alternates are based on a driven pile.
A driven, okay.
And to the female elevations.
Right. So there's no drop-off in standard or quality?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Sheila?
Thank you for the update. You answered most of my questions through Mr. Kylie, and it appears that you're on task and moving forward, and I'm pleased with what I see, and I look forward to the next update. Thank you.
I'm sorry that we didn't get out, we were hoping for the later meeting in May and thought it'd be better just to get to the earlier meeting. So we're a little, little, little bumpy in getting you information in a timely basis, so you could have looked it over. I apologize for that. We'll be back, probably right around the time we establish the GMP.
And for a rough date for that, when would you expect that to be?
Well, it'll be the end of June. I'd like to, I'd like to come before the board and tell you where we are dollar-wise before we kick this project off, because this committee's going to have to authorize the project to proceed, and we have no problem with that. But I'd like you to, I'd like to share it with you, and so we all know where we're going.
Okay. Thank you. Now, I was looking for, that was my question, is when do we get the next update? Thank you very much. If there are no more questions?
No.
Just Mr. Bradley, thank you, and appreciate all the documentation, and look forward to the next update.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Bradley.
All right. Next item up. Let's get this update out of our way. Next item up, we have an update from the chief fiscal officer to hear an update on snow clearing overruns and the approach to covering those costs in the budget. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, before I go to that topic, one comment on Penfield. I spoke with Himes' office today, and the TAC has been engaged.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, could you explain to the board what TAC means?
Oh, I thought we did that last time. Technical Assistance Coordinator.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so we're, we're in the process of scheduling.
Well, if I could, if we could have one conversation going on in the room, please, and right now, Mr. Mayor has the floor.
And so we're in the process of scheduling those first work sessions that we talked about to reconcile the fifty percent rule differences between these, the initial, our initial report and calculation and the state's initial, and FEMA's initial report calculation.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Onto the topic on the agenda. So the agenda item is snow. But before we get into snow, dollar-wise, I'm going to ask Scott to come up and talk about snow, what happened, activities, operations. But before we get into that, I want to put it in the global context. From a budget perspective, fiscal year two zero one six has been, excuse me, two zero one five has been extremely challenging. We had the snow, which is about five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We had the IT licensing thing, which is four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. We had injuries in both, in both the police and fire departments, requiring considerable overtime. Like our overtime budget overage in the police is about four hundred thousand dollars. It's over in the fire department. So the town has had to adjust to these issues. We've had some good fortune, and we've had some management. The good fortune is the town revenues have been, come in very, very strong, and the, and we've managed expenses by putting on some, put some vacancies on hold, put some hiring on hold, cut back on some office supplies and things like that. So it's really a more broad picture as to how we covered one individual item. I can't say that. I mean, we've used up our contingency, our normal contingency, and we've made various other operational adjustments for the purpose of addressing all of these overages. But with that, I'd like Scott to come up and talk about why we had a five hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar overage in snow.
Thanks, Bob. I always love to come up here and tell us why we're over budget. Scott Bartlett, Superintendent of Public Works. Love it. But basically, we all know, tough winter, below normal temperatures. I think I sat with you in the budget hearings in December and talked about how good the winter was going at that point, and boy, did it change, you know, mid-January right through March. But basically, our drivers were our overtime cost, our materials cost, and our contractors' cost, and that's the lion's share of our overage, with some smaller items being things like mechanical line items. But at the end of the day, the reality is we budgeted just over four hundred thousand or had budgeted four hundred thousand, expended just over nine hundred thousand. So obviously, we're looking at a big hole. There was plenty of communication with Bob Mayor, as well as Mr. Tetrow, as was ongoing, what we needed to do, and equally as important, what could we cut back in the spring to cover some of these overages. Unfortunately, we all learned as we came out of the winter what the impact on our roads were, so we can't do as much balancing within our budget due to those road problems that we thought we could. But we think, you know, we're ending up kind of where we thought we'd be, about five hundred thousand in the hole due to the bad winter.
Okay. And on plus side, I've gotten a number of compliments to you and your department on how great the job they did in terms of keeping the roads clear and getting them clear with it seemed like the weekly snowfalls that we were getting through that time. So thank you on that. But as the expression goes, there's no free lunch, and we paid the price for that. Next year, you've promised to schedule those snow storms during the week workday?
Yeah, right. There you go. As much as I can, like rain on fields.
Less of them, too. But any, just, as a quick, any questions from the board?
I have just a quick question. So you said overtime, materials, and using outside contractors. Can you break that down for us a little bit in terms of where was the biggest chunk of that five hundred and twenty thousand?
Overtime, two hundred and forty-six thousand.
Yeah.
How much, I'm sorry?
Overtime, two hundred and forty-six thousand.
Two hundred and forty-six thousand of overtime.
And twenty-three cents.
Okay. And materials and contractors?
Yeah, materials ran over, materials ran over a hundred and forty-six thousand, and contractors ran over ninety-six thousand.
And the contractors were mainly bringing in more equipment for plowing, basically?
That's correct.
And for moving this, moving the snow?
In most cases, we did removal after a snow event with in-house crews.
Okay.
A more typical winter, if we weren't at that spending delta, we might have hired contractors to clean like Fairfield Center or remove snow from a railroad. But I think, as a society, we all become somewhat tolerant, and we have to make judgments through the winter. So when we see we're overspending, we can certainly, and again, I think residents appreciate the fact that it might take a little longer to move it because we're going to do eight-hour shifts at straight time, in lieu of dropping twenty thousand dollars and doing it with a contractor at night. We let the winter dictate that. I mean, obviously, if it's not a bad winter, and everybody wants the initial in one big snow removed, we might expend twenty thousand, have contractors do it. In a winter like this, when we've, you know, virtually run the money dry, we're going to go into a more conservative approach and take a little longer to finish the task, but keep the cost in control.
I might ask the following question on that?
Sure.
Could you, because we had so much, or so many issues with salt and chemicals a year ago, and almost ran out, and several times around here did, could you talk a little bit about materials, how you manage that, and what materials are we actually buying?
Yeah. We budget annually for three thousand tons of salt. To put it in perspective, this year, we used forty-five hundred, so we usually, you know, literally went fifteen hundred over our capacity. We lucked out because it was the same state bid, but when we did the state bid, there are two components of it, a delivered price for salt and what they call FOB, a picked-up price. When we signed up for the bid, we took the pickup option as well as the delivery. What happened is, there isn't really a salt shortage, but there's a delivery shortage. When all the municipalities and the state are drawing for the same commodity, there's only so many trucks that can deliver. So basically, the way the state does it is, okay, Fairfield needs five hundred tons? Let's keep them happy and send them two trucks a day for a week. Well, that doesn't cut it for us because we're going to run out. We took our FOB option, hired eight trucks, and went up in, in a matter of two days, got our five hundred tons that we needed. We did it to such a level that the state is now rescinding that right because we kind of proved to them that they caused the shortage. It was really not a shortage in material, it's a shortage in delivery. They wouldn't work around the clock. They had a bunch of issues in terms of getting us the salt. But again, we had to work around this year. What we're doing to protect ourselves moving forward is going to be part of two bids, a state bid and a bid with other municipalities for the same product. So we feel we have good insurance going forward. The other thing which the boards have helped us with through the budget, we're doing more with liquid. The liquid will reduce the amount of salt we put out. So what's happened the last few budgets, we didn't get the trucks. We now are getting back online with trucks. So we'll be able to do pretreatment, which will allow us to use less salt, which we think is an absolute home run. So pretreatment's going to keep our roads safer before the snow starts, safer on contact when the snow starts, and less material being used to fight that snow because you have that liquid base. So we think all the things we're doing are heading in the right direction.
If I can just rephrase that to make sure I heard it right?
Mm-hmm.
You're basically saying because we funded new truck purchases in our budget this year?
Correct.
We're going to save money literally every year going forward on our salt and materials purchases in the winter?
I absolutely believe that to be the case, yes.
Wow, thank you.
Because a lot of things, like when you have a tank, it has spray bars, for example. So you need enough trucks in your fleet. So we'll take an older truck and we'll pretreat, and then we'll park it. And somebody may see it sitting in the yard and say, geez, it's odd, it should be out plowing. But you can't plow with that because when you make corners with snow banks, you take the same spray bar that puts the liquid, now it bends against the pile of snow. So you end up needing the equipment. So we take all the old equipment because the liquid tends to be very aggressive. But we'll be able, we'll be in a position for the first time, as far as I've been employed with the town, where we can designate pretreat trucks, park them, go out, fight the snow, then have the same trucks that fight the snow haul the snow days later. But now we get another storm predicted, go back to the first set of trucks, pretreat again, and the salt quantities absolutely diminish based on the liquid component. The liquid component makes it hotter and react faster, essentially.
And does all of that combined make for roads that are less pitted for, I don't know what the right technical term is, but because you're, fewer potholes, basically, because you're pretreating and then you're using less salt, or is that not?
Unfortunately, that's not related.
Okay. So it's just the snow itself?
Right.
And the ice and the freezing?
Yeah. The conventional thinking from a public works management side was years ago, everybody did salt and sand, and the thought was that a little bit of salt helped melt the snow, but the sand gave you traction. And everything was about, watch what the snow does, and then react to it and make the motorist safe by giving them traction. But today, it's all about pretreating. But today, it's all about pre-treat and don't let the snow stick to your pavements, then you don't need the sand. And the reason we got rid of sand, sand was actually much cheaper than salt, except for the state gets you because they say, okay, now that you put down the sand for literally 20% of what the salt cost is, but you now sweep it up. It now has asphalt fines from the road, it becomes a contaminated product. So now you have to, you know, literally farm out and dispose of that product. So our street sweeping has dramatically improved because we're not sweeping up that sand. We don't have the initial low cost of the sand, but we don't have the high disposal cost of the sand. But it's all today about pre-treat, keep them safe, don't let the snow bond to your pavements, versus a decade ago, it was react to what the snow did.
So the snow has been a blessing of sorts in that we've learned quite a lot in terms of how to move forward.
Yeah, I guess it's a.
Efficiency.
It's a blessing until you hit the fifth storm of the year that it's.
It is no longer a blessing.
But we are very encouraged and we are very excited by the support we've gotten in the recent budgets with the equipment. And again, we, we might even be able to turn around and start to drop salt in terms of, like I said, do we budget 3,000? We kept it at 3,000, but we honestly believe with, you know, the enhancements with the liquid, and once we start showing that those numbers can go down, we may be able to reduce the budget.
Mr. Kyla?
Just one quick one on the liquid substance that you put on the broach prior to the snow. How, how many hours does that substance stay, you know, active? Like, is it?
It literally will stay active until the water melts, you know, melts away. So if you pre-treat, and it's a six-inch snowstorm, right? Obviously, the six-inch snowstorm has a half inch of rain essentially, you know, built into it. I mean, in theory, you know, snow density is always a variable based on if it's a light fluffy snow or a heavy wet snow. But the rule of thumb usually is a foot of snow equals like an inch of rain. So a six-inch snow is going to have an impact because it becomes a half inch of water and it melts some of that. But we have seen a good response in when we go home and it's 20 degrees that night, we're not being called back by the police to come out and resalt. So we believe it still has a residual value, right? In the old days, again, we would treat. Then we go home, everybody's exhausted, nobody wants to answer the phone, PD's on the phone at 3:00 AM because everything iced over. We definitely see the value because we're not getting those callbacks. The roads look wet, but they're not frozen any longer because the salt is good to a certain temperature, but the liquid's good to like negative 25. So when the air temperature or ground temperature are 15 or 20 degrees, we're not getting those pesky callbacks.
Right, and I think you touched on my question, but how many hours is the product good? Is it like one hour or is it 10 hours? Is it in between?
It could be three days.
Oh, it could be, it could be.
Yeah.
So which, you know, as you get more scientific about this, looking forward, you know, there could be some opportunities for some savings. If you could properly predict when the snow was going to fall?
Right.
And use your regular straight rate time during the day to put the liquid down? Then you might need less guys at night to plow at overtime rates, and things like that make a difference in the big picture over time as it becomes more scientific?
Absolutely, and that's what we do. The biggest challenge we have is the inaccurate forecasting because, because if we all hear there's a big one coming Saturday night? We certainly want to pre-treat Friday. The risk you run if you pre-treat, it's not so much you miss the big one if it doesn't hit you Saturday, it's if it rains then Monday, then your Friday treatment, you know, is useless. If it stays cold and it snows Monday, you still have the residual value even though you missed the Saturday storm. But that is exactly what we're up to, and that's why, you know, certain employees aren't always thrilled with some of the things we do, but we feel we're here to manage for the town, manage for public safety, not always necessarily managing for the employees' delight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions at this point?
No.
Mr. Mayor, did you have any add-on work to step through?
Thank you.
Was Mr. Mayor going to touch on remedies for funding the current year shortfall? Is that part of our presentation?
I thought I did that.
Why don't you review it then?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, the town has had significant budget shortfalls. It had 471,000 in IT licensing requirements, it had 526,000 here, had $400,000 in overtime at the police department due to injuries and illnesses, equivalent number at the fire department. So, so it's not like, so what the town, so what we're using, what we've done is we've held back on some hiring, held back on department supplies, used our contingencies, and had a good year in revenues such that there's no, it's not like I can say, well, I used this number for that one, this for that. But when you add it all up and sum it all together, the town is covered with respect to its forecast and there's, I think, $500,000 in the contribution to surplus in the budget. That's safe, and we might end up even actually, when all is said and done, with a little bit more than that.
Yeah, and I didn't mean to make you repeat all that stuff that I did here, I just didn't know if at the end of the conversation, there was a, you know, net-net, it sounds like we're okay at the end of the day.
Yeah, no, I'm not sure I closed out that way. I apologize, yeah, so yeah, so but net-net, you know, and I didn't mention on this contribution surplus, which is always at risk.
Okay.
Yes, so that, that's, I'm pretty certain is very, very safe. And I think we'll even, you know, like the last several years, people are used to this big surplus we've had, but as our budgeting has gotten tighter and we've, you know, focused on eliminating department concussions and those types of things, you know, it's, makes it a little bit tougher to manage. It's a better budget, but tougher to manage.
Right.
But I think we'll, you know, we'll come in within a couple hundred thousand bucks.
Good, thank you. Just to set the stage on this, and I probably could have done this upfront, but what I asked Mr. Mayor to do is come and give us an update on our snow overage because of the overtime use and our overrun in the public works department. It's been very visible and very talked about. I wanted to give us an update here to this board. There will be kind of a complete quarterly review, as we normally do with the Board of Finance, so we'll have all this done. So the idea is not to give us a quarterly review, but give us a heads-up in this one area, just because I know we're all getting asked about it, and I just wanted to make sure we had a sense of where we stood on that.
And that quarterly review is the 12th, I think, if may.
It's coming up, right?
You're invited to attend.
Thank you.
VIP seating.
Thank you, thank you. I think that's it here, unless there were any follow-up questions?
No, that was the final piece for me, thank you.
Bob, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, from the Director of Public Works, and this requires Board of Finance and RTM approval. This was postponed from our April 22nd meeting to here, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Public Works. Since this is a postponed item, I would really appreciate a motion to suspend reading of the item.
So moved, second.
A second, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Mr. Michelangelo, I will leave this up to your hands, but just to summarize, after going through all the boilerplate, the final paragraph, this is further resolved that a bond resolution entitled "A Resolution Appropriating $3,888,000 for Costs Associated with Construction of a BERM and Pumping Station and Authorizing Issuance of Bonds to Finance Such Appropriation" be and hereby is approved. Mr. Michelangelo?
Thank you, so I'll talk about the BERM protection at the wastewater treatment plant. Laura Pooley is here from my office. The next item, of course, the microgrid, and they're hand-in-hand, and Ed Bowman is also here from my item, from my office. So I'll touch upon the project in general and try to focus on what I think were some of the questions from the last meeting. It's an ambitious project, complicated project, so I'll try to go through it somewhat. So our wastewater treatment plant is located on both sides of Richard White Way, One Rod Highway, with the bulk of the facilities being on the north side, which the flow comes in at a very subterranean level. We know how low the beach area is, well, the flow comes in from town, about 25 feet below grade even at the plant. So a large part of the plant is subterranean, and then it gets pumped through the various processes all along these different tankages and chamberages, then it goes across the street for final treatment, and eventually to Long Island Sound. There's a solids portion there too. So during Sandy, the plant was affected very much during the storm. But let me take out a flood map. I go through a series of maps. So this is the general layout of the site on both sides of One Rod Highway, with all the different buildings outlined over there. This may illustrate it also. This is the same map, different scale. This is a flood map of our zone at the area there. So once again, this is One Rod Highway, Richard White Way, with the bulk of the facility being on the north side, the other part being on the south side of Richard White Way. This is the flood zone, and we've heard the different, you know, when we talk about Penfield, we hear the V-zone 13 and different terms like that. So along Fairfield Beach Road Peninsula, you can see, that's all A15 along there, but basically, our entire plant is in the flood zone 13, which means during a 100-year flood, the water will rise to elevation 13. All the ground over here will be saturated, including the entire plant, the transfer station, even our public works garage over there. The only part over here which wouldn't be inundated is this Green Cycle site, which obviously sits about 10 feet higher. If this map went further, there's the old landfill which sits over here between Public Works and Mona Terrace, which also sits high. But basically, those are the only islands during a 100-year storm.
So that is not necessarily in Storm Sandy what flooded?
Correct.
But when preparing or allowing for a 100-year storm? Sandy was like a 70-year storm?
Probably, it depends what criteria you use, but that's a good enough approximation.
So in a typical 100-year storm, is what is our standard planning objective?
Correct. So each, and there's numerous different buildings and facilities on this site, probably about a dozen of them, and some of them are more vulnerable than others. So ideally, if this was a blank canvas and you were going to build it from scratch, you'd probably build the land up higher and protect the individual buildings. But in this case, you're not going to retrofit, you know, just like they're retrofitting properties along the shoreline, you're not going to retrofit this existing plant to be waterproof. So the solution to make this floodproof is to build this dike, this way, this purple area goes away at this facility itself. Just to try to answer the question of what happened during Sandy, and this is an aerial map which shows how far it went. So the only dry islands during Sandy is, once again, the Green Cycle site where you see the buses over there. This is outlined in red because this is basically a dry island. And our wastewater treatment plant does rise to approximately elevation 10, 11, 12. So at this site over here, the water, standing water level was about 10.3. So at 10.3, the majority of the site was high and dry, or high, not necessarily too dry, but the water was all around it and did come up in the fringes. And a couple of things it did to us is where the, where the, basically where the flow comes into the plant is right at this corner there. So one of the things we're battling is not only full pipes of water coming in from our 17,000 users and whatever got into the system, surface water was literally getting into that system itself. So that was one of the things we're fighting on the, on the inside. We weren't just getting flood, we weren't just getting sewer water and floodwater from the pipe, we were getting it in the surface just because it was at the level where the building was unprotected. It was probably knee-high at that building itself over there. So that was one of the things we were fighting. These tanks on the other side sit low also. So once again, the water on this level, which was basically complete coverage, was getting into these final settling tanks. So we were, we were challenged in that we were, we were pushing salt water through the plant because it was getting into the inlet, and on the outlet, we were taking in water there too. So we were able to get through Sandy through that week. We had partial treatment basically during the whole time, but once again, it's not a situation that we'd want to enter. But basically, at the other scenario, you know, the 13th scenario would be, you know, catastrophic for the plant. So if we had the standing water level of 13 there, there's really no treatment you could do. You basically are in a standstill, and with the subterranean nature of the, of the plant, there'd be, you know, substantial damage to all the plant equipment down there. So the way to protect it, like I said, is not to retrofit the building. We've had the, an engineering firm tie-in bond, come up with a proposal. DEP is excited by the proposal, goes hand-in-hand with our microgrid project, and we feel this is the way to protect the plant, and we've gotten a 75% grant from the CBGD Dr. funds.
Okay, but this would, by building this berm, we would protect not only WPCA, but also conservation, the fire center, and the animal shelter.
Correct, yeah, by, by nature of the, the aforementioned Green Cycle Harvest New England facility, because that's high, that's where we have to tie into. And by, you know, it's a co-benefit that, to get to these locations here, we also encompass the other projects. And, you know, isolating the wastewater treatment plant, it could go over here, but arguably, that'd be more difficult. So the correct way to do it is to, to include those properties also as a co-benefit to this protection project.
Any questions?
Yeah, last time around, you talked about how you're tying into the roads, but I think by putting, you know, rises in the road, can you work through that again? I didn't get all of that.
Yeah, so obviously, the top of this berm is going to be somewhere around elevation 15, protect, it hasn't been final designed yet, but based on the flood map, we want to be at about elevation 15 or thereabouts. And for the most part, it could go along the whole way, with the exception over here, which we may have to have a vertical wall. So similarly, we also have to get the elevation 15 over here.
On the road itself?
On the road itself, because that would be our hump. So we have to tailback, going backwards, to get a proper road grade, and we wouldn't go any more than an 8% grade to chase it up here until we get to the top, and then we go down, and then once again, we do the same thing over here. And just to give you a scale, if you've ever driven up, you know, the, the road to Green Cycle there? And, you know, that, that goes up to elevation, probably about 19.
Oh, it does.
So that, so our humps up and down wouldn't be as severe as the road to Green Cycle, and trucks and passenger cars navigate that daily with no problem.
So are they like humps with a leveling off in between, or is it just more of an incline? I'm not picturing it.
Well, it's, 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 in engineering terms, we call them vertical curves, so it's very easy, you know, an eight into an eight, it'll look like any subdivision road that you're driving up, and, you know, to a, to a normal traveler going to a transfer station, they could travel that road their whole life and never, you know, one of our goals as designers to make it invisible for them. They'll go up that road and they'll never have any idea why it was there, or even that there is pitch in the road.
But in the end, it gets up to 15, equivalent to the wall itself, all, all around the facilities?
Correct.
It does, okay. Could you go back and talk a little bit about getting the water out of this area? You know, the huge storm comes in, there's a ton of water that gets in there anyway, just falling from the sky. How does that water get migrated outward?
Well, and, and once again, hopefully, when this berm is here.
There's less of that.
Well, yeah, the only water we'd be evacuating is water that falls from the sky. So any levee system, any dike system, anywhere, needs a pump to evacuate the water. So there would be a pump located here, which wouldn't be tremendously sized, sized to meet the needs, but we're, you know, theoretically, it's only draining the rain that comes on a 15-acre site, which isn't massive, you know. The problem isn't handling the water from the sky, but it would be designed to handle that.
So within the site, do you grade the site to kind of run all that water to one place, and where would that be, or would you put that strategically elsewhere?
Yeah, you'd put it to, you'd put it to a spot or two spots. So right now, you wouldn't have to grade it. So right now, the low spots on the site are, you know, here and here. So there are already low spots, so that's where you collect it.
So you've got some naturally low spots that you could utilize without having to grade?
Yeah.
Okay.
Even, even here is low too.
Okay, so it would be multiple pumps is what you're drawing?
Or you'd connect them to one low, you'd connect all those low spots.
I had, just when you were talking about grading the road?
I had, just when you were talking about grading the road, is that an extra cost, or is that within the DPW's budget? Or, how are we going to fund grading the roads?
That's inclusive of this project.
It is contained within this price?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you.
I think between last time and this time, and some of our discussions between, you've answered most of my questions on this. And, basically, we're building a big wall around these facilities to keep the water out.
Correct.
With a couple of engineering wrinkles to make it more effective.
And, we're getting a 75% grant on the state, which is critically important.
So, what I'm going to do, if it's okay with everybody, ask Attorney Lesser to take us through both his legal opinion on how this might be funded, in terms of what some of our options are. And then, that'll put us, I think, in a better perspective to view the bond resolution on that. So, Attorney Lesser, if you could.
Thank you.
And, this is a legal opinion that was emailed out to the board earlier.
Well, I think, right at the outset, you could probably disregard some part of that opinion. The very last thing I think I said was that we should run this by bond council because they're the ones that are going to have to certify to the bonds. So, the question here is, this is not a 100% grant, at least for the berm project. I think for the microgrid, it's 100%, so this doesn't really apply. The question is, who's going to pay for the town's portion, or the non-grant portion? And, I had opined in my letter that the town could require the WPCA to pay its share. That may be true, but I did send this to our bond council, Pullman Commley, and I got a response from them this morning, actually, this afternoon. And, after my discussion with them, it's clear to me, they are not comfortable certifying the bonds that would pledge revenues from the WPCA to pay the bonds without an agreement from the WPCA to do so. I think it goes back to their history with other towns. And, quite frankly, the way this is being done would be backwards just about every other project. In other words, it's usually the WPCA that comes and says, "We want to do something." They sign an agreement. You bond it, we'll pay. That, so far, is not the case here. So, when I spoke to Attorney Staffstrum, he said, "We're just not comfortable certifying them without some kind of an agreement." So, my recommendation would be that you get an agreement. If you decide that the WPCA should pay for part of this, that you either postpone this or make it contingent on them agreeing to do it. There's a little bit of a different wrinkle in, especially after Mike's question to Mr. Michelangelo, and his response, that this berm does not, is not going to only protect WPCA assets. It will protect non-WPCA assets. You might want to allocate it, you might want to prorate it, you might want to say to the WPCA, "Pay your share." Or, you might want to say the town should pay for it, you know, 100%. If you do that, I think there's some ramifications on the payment. It would come out of tax funds, obviously, just general tax funds. And, not all of the users of the WPCA pay taxes. I mean, that's one, some of the...
Yeah, well, just to be clear, the two biggest, the biggest user of the water treatment facility is Fairfield University. Being a non-for-profit, they don't pay taxes, they do pay sewer fees. The state and the rest areas along 95. Obviously, the state doesn't pay taxes, but the rest areas do use a fair amount of the resources of this. So, those are two big examples of users that would only pay if it came out of sewer use fees as opposed to taxes.
So, I think your options are, you can say, "We're going to go ahead and accept the grant money, postpone the bonding issue." You can say, "We're going to postpone it all." I think that you would want to hear from Mr. Bowman about postponing the acceptance of the grant. I don't know if there are time limits, I'm not prepared to speak to them, but I think Mr. Bowman could, or Ms. Pulling. But, I think those are your options here. But, if you are intending to have WPCA revenues pay for part of this, I think that, after my conversation with Mr. Staffstrum, you should probably get their approval before you do that.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? No. Okay. Just to get a firm answer from Mr. Bowman, if you could, just in terms of, are there any critical dates with the acceptance of the grant or completion of this project that we know?
I think the only real critical date is the completion date, as I understand, which is like two years out, right? And, the problem, the problem there is how long it takes to get, prior to construction. There has to be an environmental assessment done first before we can even sign the grant. Then, state permitting, now, state permitting can take a year. And, in addition to state permitting, on the microgrid, you need UI interconnection agreement, which takes four or five months. So, you've got, out of the two years or so, two and a half years, one and a half years could be spent in permitting from UI, the state, the town, and it could really cut into the construction time. So, I wouldn't want to delay it too much, that's for sure. Because, the micro itself is contingent upon this project. They're only giving the money because it's protected in a 100-year flood. So, it's like everything is contingent on that.
Okay. If I might just, just to...
Go ahead.
Unless you had to follow directly on that, I was going to go to Mr. Michelangelo.
I did. On those two processes you just described, the UI process and the state process, can they go concurrently, or do they have to go sequentially?
They can go concurrently, to a degree, anyway.
To a degree. Okay, so, it's not quite...
You wouldn't have to wait for a full state berm before you start with the UI.
Okay. Thanks.
If I could, just again, to clarify the timeline, Mr. Michelangelo, when is the next WPCA meeting? And, when might something like this be taken up if we're going to, if this board were to approach the WPCA and ask, or talk about how we might share the costs on this?
They meet the fourth Wednesday of each month.
So, and it's now May, the fourth Wednesday's like the 27th?
Yeah, three, three is from today, so, yeah, I believe so, yeah. Correct. 27th.
I think that's, I'll have to check my calendar. I think that sounds right.
And, the next Board of Finance meeting is June...
First Tuesday. I don't know.
Do we have, I think that's like the second or third?
June 2nd.
Okay.
So, it's a Wednesday night through the following Tuesday.
Yes.
Six days, five days.
Which puts the RTM into late June.
29th.
This is pretty cool. Okay.
We could try to get a special meeting for the WPCA, if that's the route we want to go.
Well, I think we could probably do the 27th. It kind of fits within that.
Think that's enough time?
As long as we have to come back to the Board of Selectmen's approval.
Well, we need the 20, I'm sorry.
Here's the thought process, that if we choose, we go ahead and approve this with the town funding it. Because we know it, it's reasonable that we'll fund some portion of it, if not all. But, we go ahead and import this. With this board's permission, you authorize, may with your input, to attend the WPCA meeting, propose to them and talk to them about what portion of this they might share, based on the protection of the WPCA facility. But, that way, we're not holding up. If they do agree to share some portion of it, then we can present that decision to the Board of Finance, and they can modify the bonding resolution to reflect that.
Right.
If not, the Board of Finance already has in their hands a bond resolution that we'd approve here, so it's not held up.
Yeah.
And then, I would think that we could actually go back and modify this bond resolution and approval, if it were to change, all the way up until the point that we're actually issuing the bonds?
I would imagine that the Board of Finance certainly can modify the resolution based on what you report to them. The resolution as written now calls for the bonds to be issued on the full faith and credit of the town. So, it's simply a town pay. So, if you approve that, that's what it'll be. But, I think that the Board of Finance could certainly say, "We want to issue them partly with revenue from the..."
And, I think as we learn our, the new bond policy approach, that they could bring it, that they could approve it with the WPCA component in place, if that's what the WPCA agreed to. We could go back, subject to our approval, we could meet and approve it, and then it could go straight to the RTM for there, so it wouldn't have to circle back. That was one of the options in the approval streams, if I remember correctly.
It was.
Correct. All right, so I think we have some options. I think that my concern, based on what Mr. Bowman presented, that year and a half potential on the approval cycle, that we approved something today to get it moved. I'm in favor of the project, so let me describe that. I think this is important for our town. We can't promise that a 100-year flood is going to happen tomorrow, but it just, to me, seems to make sense. We've got 75% state funding to do this, so I think we should do that. If we bond the whole thing, the $700,000 bonded is the equivalent of $35,000 a year over 20 years. That's without interest, there'd be some interest component on top of that. So, as I look at that, that seems to be a reasonable annual expenditure for the safety and security of our water treatment facility. I would not want to be in a storm if that were completely flooded out and non-operational. That would have a major impact on our town. And importantly, on the time of recovery coming back from a storm. We were, as much as we were without power, and we had debris to clean up and roads to clean up, we actually came back relatively quickly from Sandy in terms of the town itself functioning. Something like this, I... Gentlemen, I don't know if either one of you would want to give us an estimate of the damage cost and time to recovery if this facility flooded out?
Yeah, it would be months in the process to rebuild it. And, I mentioned where all the equipment would be, basically, drowned and submerged. And, just as a much smaller project, the town of Trumbull, when we were working with them, had a, had a one sanitary sewer pump station in Upper Park Avenue in Trumbull, which the pumps failed on that. And, that's one pump station which serves 300 homes. And, I saw what they, and I think they still haven't got it yet, but the expense and the trouble they did for that one pump station, which is maybe, you know, 1% of what we have in here. So, you know, yeah, we'd be months at least to repair and replace and get all the equipment operational.
And, that would be both residential and commercial. I mean, this would put a commercial customers in serious jeopardy.
And then, also, the cost. I mean, just the cost involved, not just the time, but the major costs.
As we all know, we have a $500,000 deductible on these policies, so we're looking at paying the first $500,000 at least.
If I may.
Yeah.
I agree with everything that Mr. Tetchwood just said. I certainly support the project, not holding it up, letting these gentlemen move on with these projects, and getting these areas safeguarded. And, so, from a process perspective, I think we can make it work. My one caveat is, I really do feel strongly that some component of this should be paid by the WPCA.
Absolutely.
So, I don't know how we can effectively deliver that message back to them. And, maybe that'll fall to us, meeting with them or attending that next meeting. I don't know what the math would shake out to be, what the, of the $700,000, how much of it should be out of the WPCA. But, I don't think that the taxpayers should bear the full burden of this cost. So, I'm cautiously okay moving forward in this manner, but I don't want to weaken our position going back to the WPCA.
Saying we agreed to...
And then have them say, "No, we don't want to participate," and then we do get stuck with the whole thing. So, how do we manage that?
Oh, we have two options. Weekend postponement again, and basically wait another 30 days to get that resolution first. Or, go back and that. Either authorize us, and obviously, as a member of the WPCA, and as the Board of Selectmen appointed member of the WPCA.
Right.
You would have a major discussion point on that.
Right.
I'd be happy to go, working with Mr. Michelangelo and Mr. Bowman, and make the proposal that we work through some shared cost basis on that. I think the, you know, if we, I'm concerned about the timing, but certainly, Mr. Bowman, I'm going to suggest that another 30 days doesn't cause a significant problem.
Yeah.
All right, so I think we've got 30 days to do that. I would get concerned if we go too much further than that.
Yeah.
And frankly, I think this is where we need to work together. Because, if push comes to shove, I would hate to lose both this $3 million and consequently, the $2 million of the microgrid on top of this.
Right.
If I may, too, I mean...
If you, if you may, from the mic.
The WPCA probably benefits more from the microgrid. You know, because you're going to have power outages a lot more than you're going to have 100-year storms. If you don't protect from 100-year storms, you're not going to be able to have complete protection on the microgrid from power outages.
Right.
And, the power outage in this case will give us up to 30 or 60 days of 100% power. So, that's another benefit that only comes to the WPCA.
Yeah, what we're going to come back to when we get to the other piece is, I'd like to get a flavor for, on the microgrid, what the annual cost savings is, if any, or is adjusted storm. Or, maybe, if you can answer that straightforwardly.
It's really not an annual savings, but what it is, it allows it, it's complicated. And, we're putting a 1,000 KW photovoltaic on the landfill, which will power the treatment plant also. And, both the new firehouse, our fire station down there, the cannon shelter and the conservation garage are also going to have photovoltaic on them, okay? We've already got a grant to put it under the fire. Now, and we have microturbines on site.
Do we know what the cost reduction of those projects will be for the WPCA?
Well, yeah, I mean, 1,000 KW is going to...
I don't mean to put you on the spot right this minute.
No, I'm thinking through it.
But, I would, I would like that number in terms of the, if they spend $1,000 a year on power, I know it's a lot more than that. Does this reduce that by 10%, 20%? What's the reduction?
This will be over 50% reduction.
Wow.
It's a major piece of equipment. And, again, that equipment can't run when power's off.
Right.
But, we have other equipment on there that can run when power's off. The microturbines there run on natural gas, they could continue to run. With a 1,000 KW generator on there, switching that from diesel to natural gas, that would continue to run. What the, what the microgrid technology does is allow all this, basically automatically switch back and forth and run what's needed, to pump it to where it is needed. And, even in normal operations, what it would do is, when we are producing enough sun power to run the plant, it will shut everything else down, so we're getting free power. And, not free, but cheaper power. It'll always provide the greenest and least expensive power on a day-to-day basis, not just when the... So, the micro does have other benefits that way. It'll save money for the operation by giving us the cheapest power whenever we need it.
Does somebody have an estimate? Sorry, if it's okay.
Please.
Sorry, I didn't mean to jump right in there. Does somebody have an estimate of how often our generator has run? Because it's been needed to run in the last five years?
Don't have it in my head, but we can get that for sure.
I think that would be kind of an important data piece to have, so we understand how often this is used. Because one of my concerns is if somebody says, "Well, we never use the generator, so why do we need the microgrid?" I'd like to have an answer for that.
Okay.
We can do that.
I just have a suggestion, and it's far be it from me to impose more work on anyone, but if you're going to postpone this in light of what Mr. Calley said about your decision, perhaps you could schedule a special meeting between WPCA and the Board of Finance. So, if you're actually going to postpone the decision to see what WPCA is going to do, you could have a special meeting yourself, I think, and then pass it on.
Okay, we can certainly take a look at that. And I think we're all amenable to that. I think it's just logistics and trying to make it work.
Yeah. And, I don't want to lose the 30 days either. I'm not looking to lose the 30 days, and I'm not looking to upset the process. And, certainly support the projects and all the hard work that's gone into it, without question. And, taking advantage of the grant and the timeline and basically everything that we've talked about. So, I'm just looking to manage that so we don't just commit to spending all of it ourselves and then find out that, you know, and then find out that, you know, we have no alternative to that.
I think the issue is that as we get into the summer months, the Board of Selectmen continues to meet through the summer. However, some of our associated boards do take some months off. So we have a mixed schedule in July and August.
Right.
So I think that, well, it may not impact the overall construction schedule and permit process. It's probably very good for us to focus on making sure we get this resolved through the Board of Finance and through the RTM by the end of June.
Absolutely.
And taking the steps we need to make sure that happens.
So...
So that puts the Board of Finance meeting in June on the critical path. We need to get...
Uh huh.
Yeah, because the RTM usually takes July or August off. They choose one or the other meeting.
The RTM typically takes July off.
Yeah.
They come back for August when school starts.
Right.
Board of Finance typically takes, actually, July off too, I think, or do they take August off?
Sometimes. It depends on what's going on.
Board of Finance, they'll have a, we have a different quarterly review schedule now than these do, so I'll have to check my Board of Finance calendar.
Right, so we want to make the June RTM meeting regardless. And regardless of what we do tonight, we're not going to make the May RTM meeting, because the May RTM meeting will be before the WPCA meets again in May 27th, I think.
Well, we can't, we can't get to the Board of Finance. Board of Finance is tomorrow night.
There you go. Okay. So we're looking at June either way, so it may end up coming back to us to get together, and it's easier to get three of us together for a meeting than nine of them or 50 of them.
Yeah, well, we potentially have to, because the June Board of Finance meeting meets prior to the June Board of Selectmen meeting.
Okay.
So we'll have to arrange the meet sometime between now and May 31st.
I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to support these projects as well. I just want to make sure that we can manage the process and timeline.
We have to meet that Tuesday through Friday of Memorial Day week.
Yep.
All right, so then what I would do is suggest that we postpone this, because the item, as it stands right now, would be ready for our approval. The key is, we have to potentially make changes to the bonding resolution based on the sources of funding.
Right.
So I think we should entertain a motion to postpone this, to update certain being a special meeting between Memorial Day and the week of Memorial Day.
I'm fine with that.
Mr. Tetchwood, your meeting, I think, is going to be short, and I don't know the logistics of it, but I assume that at least some of you normally attend the Board of Finance meetings. Perhaps you could just have your meeting, call your meeting before that night, same night, before the meeting.
That's a reasonable suggestion. Sometimes the Board of Finance likes prior notice for some of these, and likes to see what it looks like ahead of time. So I would suggest that if need be, we make that resolution, a special meeting between now and the Board of Finance meeting on June 2nd.
Okay.
And that would give us the flexibility of doing that 30 minutes before, or several days before. And based on what we do, we can bring that up with the Chair of the Board of Finance and see what their pleasure is on how to do that.
Okay. If that's the motion, I'll second it.
Is that okay?
Yep. I'll make the motion.
Mr. Tetchwood? Again?
I'll...
Without having to repeat the whole thing. Trying to save time.
Yep. We're okay? Yep. So we're okay with that?
Yeah.
Any further discussion on the motion to postpone for this board? Thank you. Any public comment on the motion to postpone, and the motion to postpone only? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Lesser, I do want to thank you for your work on the legal side in terms of your opinion, also reaching out to bond counsel to get clarification. I think, as you've pointed out in the past, the clarity in our charter and town code and state statute are somewhat lacking in this. And I think we recently heard from Attorney's Staffroom at Pullman Connolly when reviewing the overall bond process, that certainly some clarity could be helpful in our charter and town code, because state statute is lacking in that regard going forward, so we can look at that as we look at a charter revision in the near future, and take that up as one of the issues we should include on that. Any further discussion on this item?
No.
We'll move on to the next one. All right, the next item is the microgrid. That really is tied to this, so there are two options. One is to postpone it now, but it might make sense if we're going to have, think of having a shorter meeting for that special meeting, that we hear out the microgrid proposal, so our questions are answered, and we know whether we would choose to support this or not prior to the special meeting.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does. I move to post to...
Well, we don't want to postpone it yet.
Not to postpone.
We don't want to hear it yet.
I was going to move to eliminate the reading of it.
We read it.
Oh, thank you.
Since we read it before.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. And just to read the closing here. Further resolved that a bond resolution entitled a resolution appropriating $2,500,000 for costs associated with the installation of a microgrid and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation be, and hereby is approved. So that is the item before us in short form. Mr. Michelangelo and Mr. Bowman, would somebody take us through this?
I'll give an overview of just the general nature of the project and turn it over to Mr. Bowman for the specifics. There's an aerial photo of the same area, which shows all the various different buildings. And we applied for a microgrid project there, which would serve these facilities. And we went through the similar experience of, we just completed it now, the police station. So that project, the police station, the fire station, Operation Hope, so they could run independently on natural gas for a 30-day period. So the, in crafting the DEP application, they like, one of the things they search for is co-benefits, that you're not just serving one facility, that it lasts for 30 days at a time. So this, we applied for a couple of years ago, and even though they thought it was a good project a couple of years ago, it was the flood zone that hampered that from getting awarded. So this project would use the existing generation capabilities at the plant and distribute them to both, the plant on both sides of the road, the animal control building, the conservation garage, and the new fire training center. So it's a great project from Town of Fairfield. DEP is all about, all behind it. Mr. Bowman could get into the technicalities of how the power gets generated, how it gets distributed to the different facilities, where the $2.5 million goes and why it's needed.
As I said earlier, even...
Mr. Bowman, before we get started, just to clarify one point.
Yep.
This project needs a total funding of $2.5 million.
Correct.
But that's 100% funding from the state, so there's no town match or town tax dollars in use on this.
That's correct. So basically, it's, basically, it's providing a bunch of computer equipment is really what it amounts to, that's able to organize, coordinate, and dispense power when and wherever it's needed under the hard times, basically. And it will coordinate the power when there isn't an emergency, but just, again, I said, sending the greenest power first and shutting down the stuff that isn't so green. I mean, it costs less money to use solar power than it does to use the microturbines. The microturbines cost less than buying it from UI, but so it'll coordinate that, and if we need two microturbines instead of six, it'll do that. When the power is off, then it'll take the power and distribute it to all four ones under the same principle. The greenest power goes to the, and the cheapest power. So there we, and we will turn on that emergency generator when it's needed. It won't be needed all the time. And that emergency, again, would be natural gas also, and that's a major cost to convert those to natural gas. So that's where it's going. It's not exactly the same, but you know, the company we chose, we've had a competitive process, and the reason we chose Schneider Electric, they'd already done 10 years' worth of microgrids. They were doing it for the federal government and army bases, places that were, again, critical areas. And they were one of the few companies that had been doing microgrids for years, and they own the technology that creates the microgrid. They're buying it from someone else. So they're staying and buying their own product. They're putting it in, and it's there, they own it. So I think that's important, too, for these kind of projects, because no one understands these darn things, you know? So, again, a whole bunch of things come with convergence to make this work. Basically, the state called us in the middle of the summer last year with four days left to file for this application, and wanted to know if we were still interested. And I got ahold of them, because they had worked on it a year before, but within four days, they were able to put together this thing, get it out there. So they had people in Tennessee, people on planes in California, everything, trying to get it together, and it worked. It got it done at a record period of time. And the state really wanted this. The state has also told us, "They're going to use our whole plant system like this as an example for the rest of the state." That's why they're so concerned. We're doing everything they want to do to flood protection, and they're going to use it as an example for the rest of the state. If we get there. Anyway, yes, that's my presentation.
Okay. If you could, again, just, one, how many days of power do we have now? We have a generator on site. If we lose power here, how many days will it power us?
It'll, it'll, there's three generators on site, actually, which have more, could provide more power than we actually need for this site. It's oversized. Again, the diesel tanks, what, the diesel tanks, what, five days, maybe, three days? I don't know how much the diesel...
Probably close to three.
Yeah. So they run out of diesel fuel. And the last storm, they would have ran out of diesel fuel. They wouldn't have been able to get it. The gassing, because they're coming in by pipeline, it isn't, you know, there's a much better chance of not being interrupted.
For Storm Sandy, did we run out of power in us?
We did.
But when you say, well, we ran out of...
We basically, during Storm Sandy, if I remember correctly, we cut power to much of the beach area, you know, Fairfield Beach Road. Did we cut power to this neighborhood?
We cut power to this plant specifically on noon on Monday, just to avoid the surges that go into, there's a lot of highly technical equipment there, drives that are subject to surges. So we cut it, we cut it from UI and ran off generator on purpose from about noon on Monday to avoid the spikes and surges that would damage the equipment.
Okay.
And then one of the things we got into, probably pretty close to Wednesday after about 48 hours, which is getting diesel to the plant to be able to run these for several more days. So we, so the way we did it, we had to come in through the backway, so we had to have Santa oil trucks deliver from the backway through Varis, through probably, you know, it receded by Thursday, but they were driving through, you know, 12 to 18 inches of water to get to us to fill up these tanks to keep it running. And power went on at the plant, it came back at the plant probably late on Thursday, but we needed a refill during that time. We couldn't go. We were not able to last on the, on the fuel that was there from prior to the storm.
If I could just point out two things, based on experiences during Irene and Sandy. One is that, as Joe mentioned, we did cut the power to this facility. Second, we're bringing, you know, diesel fuel back in through a roundabout way. If Sandy had been worse, things may have been damaged more, that you're always questioning whether the back doors were available, but even assuming it is, one of the things that happened during Irene, which hopefully we're all preparing for better now, but there were major fuel shortages in terms of diesel fuel and gas during Irene, because we were not, and I don't mean we, Fairfield, we as a state, were not as prepared. So a number of towns were in very desperate shape concerning that, and we saw things like, as we had our conference calls around the state, we'd have, once or twice a day, we'd have 169 towns on that were doing things. One of the things that stays in my mind from Irene is that there were towns that their cell towers were down because they had to go to backup power, they ran out of fuel for the backup power and couldn't replenish the fuel for the cell tower. So think about Fairfield with no cell service, and the panic that would ensue because of that. So as much as we're talking about we can go get fuel, that may not always be as easy as it is today on a dry day with no storm. I, you know, it happened before in terms of we could bring it in. Next time we have a storm, it will probably be able to bring it in again, so I don't need it. I'm not trying to scare anybody with that.
Correct.
But I'm a little cautious on such things, so I'm probably more sensitive to source of fuel for backup power because of that. Now, Mr. Bowman, we've got several different initiatives. You've been very busy in a lot of respects. Could you step us through the levels? We've got UI, we've got turbines, we've got, we're going to have solar panels at some point, we have a microgrid. Could you simply step us through that? So here's what happens on a normal day, here's what happens if power's out.
There's another factor there, too.
Excuse me?
No, I just want to, and while you're answering that, I just need clarification on the microgrid. Is this only in case of emergency, or a normal day, we're computerizing, coordinating efforts to deliver the greenest power first on an everyday basis?
It'll do that also, yeah.
Okay, so this is not just for emergencies?
It's an added benefit.
This would benefit the town every day?
Yeah. There's another thing here, is that diesel generators are not permitted to run more than five to seven days. Well, natural gas emergency generators, and that. So we're replacing, this is not an emergency generator, this is a full-time generator that's going in there, because in order to have a 30-day window or more than a five-day window, you can't use an emergency generator. So that's another factor in this.
And I should point out again, to give kudos to Mr. Bowman, he's worked with the state on the specs for this. The specs, as they came down, said, "You need to hook up the natural gas, you've got to have a 30-day supply," and they speced an emergency power generator. As we got into this, it turns out that when you talk more than the three to five days Mr. Bowman's talking about, the generator companies say, "That's no longer an emergency generator, that's a standby power source, and you've got to have a different type and a larger," let me rephrase that, "more expensive generator..."
Yes.
"...to do that." So that was something that wasn't understood in the original specs from the state, and that's one of the areas Mr. Bowman has worked with the state to help them understand what their specs need.
Okay. Now, we start from the beginning. We know what we have here now, and on site now, we do have a small photovoltaic right here. And over here, we have six 65KW microturbines. And they run 24/7. Of course, this runs when the sun's out. Most of the power we're still buying from United Illuminati, or not from United, but from, now, we have, over here, we're putting that 1,000KW solar on the landfill, which will provide us more than enough power we need during the daytime, which will mean we won't be using these other more costly sources of power during the daytime. Now, if there was, if there was battery storage, we could use it at night. So what happens there is, when we're not producing the power, then we will be using our other natural gas generators. UI buys back, also, what buys back from us the power, any excess power we make during the daytime, they buy it back at the same price they sell it to us, as long as we don't, we don't, up to the amount of money, amount of power we buy from them in any given year. So there's no worry about going over that, control that also. Now, going for, even prior to the microgrid, we've gotten a grant to put solar on the cannon shelter, we've gotten a grant to put solar on the new fire department building, and I'm sure we'll get one for conservation building, too. We're running out of buildings at this point, which is great. So now, all these things work together. There's also something we haven't mentioned, which for the future, we're now burning the methane off of that plant. We're looking at putting in a generator to burn the methane, which isn't worked into this program, because that's another cost, but that has, that has a positive cash flow in the first year. Those are, that's a great program. So when that becomes part of this microgrid in the future, you will have solar, and then number two, we do that, because it costs us nothing, we have free fuel. Then if we need more, then we'll switch to the microgrid. And only after all that will we actually buy power from the UI or someone else. So really, these controls will work during normal business hours.
So the turbines work when we need power, say, at night, or something like that?
Well, right now, they work 24/7.
Okay.
And, but they, when UI power goes down, they go down. We're converting that to island power, also as part of this, so it'll continue to run if we need them, which is something different here.
But then the, and the microgrid generator, new generator we're getting that runs off natural gas, that would only work if all the other power sources were out.
Right. Right. It still is some type of emergency generator. But even back up to that, if that all went out, we still have two other diesel generators on the site. So there's backup to backup to backup, one of the super inverters. Now, you look at the cost savings in this, when you look at, when you put everything together, the solar is a tremendous cost saving, obviously, and so would the methane generator in the future. But even on a day-to-day basis, if they're, if they're distributing us the cheapest form of power, we're not buying power at nine cents, we're getting it at six cents. of power, we're not buying power at nine cents, we're getting it at six cents. So I haven't figured out how that would work, would depend day-to-day, but that's the day-to-day benefit, not only because it distributes the power to greenest, but also the cheapest. So we do save money on a day-to-day basis, you know, as a by-product, really, of the microgrid.
If I might. Mr. Bowman, you just described like four different layers of backup. I'm a big fan of redundancy, but I could see one of the questions coming up saying, look, you're just buying redundancy on top of redundancy on top of redundancy because money's available from the state. What do you say to somebody who says, you know, we shouldn't just build all these because state funding's available? We should build these if we need them. And you just described a whole bunch of backups that we will never, ever get to all those levels.
Well, first of all, the original backup is there anyway. That's just the diesel emergency generators, number one. Number two, the solar will provide the power we need in the daytime, but it's not available at night. So the other generators have to run at night or whenever the sun isn't out. So it's really not backup to backup to backup unless the power grid goes down and we're running it all at the same time.
All right. And did we actually, and we actually did run out of fuel for the generators last time. We had to bring in additional diesel fuel.
We didn't run out. We ordered. Santa trucks came in.
We didn't, we didn't run out, but we would have ran out if we didn't bring in the diesel trucks on that Wednesday.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry to jump in there. Any questions from the board?
In my mind, it's a win-win for the town. I mean, it's being funded by the state. We're preparing for an emergency situation, which hopefully will come in time soon. And it's giving us backup sources. And in the meantime, it's allowing us to efficiently, efficiently and efficiently produce power at a less cost, savings to the town. So, and also, I love the fact that we'll be looked at as a model for the rest of the state and probably the country, which is something that we can be very proud of. And I know it's not the first time that the state has looked at us as this model for efficiencies.
Another reason why it's not backup to backup to backup is that these are 15 years old now, the microturbines. You know, another five years, we may be looking at another million dollars to do it. They may not be backup then. And we may not, choose not to replace them because we have enough other power between the solar and the methane generators. So, you know, yeah, I think in the long term, not so short term, that's what part of this is.
Okay. Mr. Kylie?
Thank you. Just quickly, we have two projects here. Can you just kind of give us a synopsis of how they work together from both a process perspective and a timeline, you know, these last two items? The flood wall and this one?
Well, they're, they'll be, they'll be constructed as totally independent projects.
That was one of my questions.
Yeah, so, you know, one company will construct one part, the other part will construct the other part. And the, and the theory behind it is that there's no sense, you know, from the microgrid aspect, there's no sense in preparing a plant to run on 30 days of natural gas if it will be flooded.
Right.
So there's, there's a need for both projects and, you know, in a sense, the microgrid projects, it is contingent on providing the protection. As far as the timing, they'll both take parallel paths. And my sense is that with the process that Mr. Bowman went through with the police department, the barrier project will most likely be ahead of that one. But once again, they'll go on, on parallel paths with the, you know, with the grant, I don't think we said the date. The state wants these, all these projects wrapped up by June of 2017, which when we start putting the calendar out there, knowing how long these projects take between the permitting, design, bidding, and construction, that's why we want to move them along.
Thank you for answering my question.
I could ask one more follow-up. In looking at the microgrid, and let's assume power's running, we've talked about the microgrid having what I'm going to call a smart controller benefit that balances power between the cheapest or most sustainable source. Is that the, assuming UI is up and running, is that the biggest benefit of the microgrid?
Yes. When UI is up and running, that's exactly what it is.
What, and you're going to give us an estimate of what that might mean in terms of cost savings or...
Yeah.
And the other way to look at that, what is the cost of that smart controller if we're just going to put that in?
I have no idea. And that's part of their technology. It's part of the whole microgrid technology. And that's the provider area and stuff.
Okay, if I look at this, the microgrid, it seems to me it's three components. One is whatever wires or distribution mechanism tie all these different sources of power into the plant. Second, this smart controller. Third, the emergency natural gas generator if we should ever need that. Am I missing anything in terms of major components?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, there are, I don't understand enough electronics, I know how much electronic equipment is in there. There's a computer that guides all this, though, that sounds like to me.
Okay. I'm just trying to make sure I understand it and trying to state that as simply as I can so I can kind of...
One large cost is the new 1,000 KW generator. That's a significant cost.
Yeah, and again, to the board, your typical emergency generator might be in 100,000, 200,000 ranges, we're prudent for Old Town Hall. That's obviously sized up for the amount of power this needs. But once you go to, once you go past that two- or three-day level, it's now, for lack of a better term, a permanent generator and you get size, capacity, and expense. Can you talk about any ratio from emergency to permanent?
Well, I know, at the police station, when we converted it to natural gas for this purpose, it was, it cost us about 130,000. That's a small one. That's 100 KW, I mean, 200 KW. But to do this one, you'd have, you'd multiply it like two or three times. So you're talking about 300, 400, maybe 500,000 dollars to do that. To buy a new one is much more. To buy a new one at the police station versus converting it would have been about 350 versus 130. So again, you convert, you're getting a brand-new thing with just the block is the only thing left, so. It's an order of magnitude number, as you said, as you are going. There's three levels of generators, emergency, there's this level, and there's the one that runs 24/7, you know, guaranteed. So there's in-between, so it's still expensive.
Okay, and we'll still have to at some point, as part of our monthly, quarterly, some sort of process, run all these different sources of power to make sure they all work. Like, we'll still have to run the diesel generators every so often to burn off the diesel fuel and to make sure that that still ties in as part of the system.
All the generators will be, you know, tied into the, the photovoltaic will run all the time. These generators are run all the time, maybe not in full power. We have a maintenance contract with them on that one, anyway. As we do have with the emergency generators. But we will take that 1,000 KW, and we're going to, when the time is right, and tie that to our emergency generator, you know, maintenance agreement, even though it's not emergency. The one at the police station will be, too, which means it'll be tested weekly and three or four times, I guess, a year under load. So yes, it will be tested. It'll probably not work when you need it.
Yes. Any further questions from the board?
No.
So that the, if there's nothing else, the next order will be a motion to postpone this to a date certain, sometime between Memorial Day and the Board of Finance.
I'll second that motion. Are you making the motion?
All right. All right. I guess I did. Any discussion on the motion to postpone? No. Any public comment on the motion to postpone and the motion to postpone only? All right, back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Thank you. Mr. Michelangelo, Mr. Bowman, thank you, and we'll see you somewhere at our meeting and then at the WPCA meeting. We have next up a motion from the tax collector to consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector and the amount recommended. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Do we have any amendments?
I'd like to make amendment to remove the period after the end of the sentence and add a comma followed by, wait for it, $6,158.44.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion on that? Any comments from the public on the amendment? The amendment only. Back to the board, are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the motion is before us as amended. Any further comment? Any comment from the public? Back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up is a private executive session with the town attorney concerning pending litigation. I have a motion to go into private executive session.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. May I have a motion to come out of private executive session?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? I just want to point out that we've come out of private executive session where no motions were made and no votes were taken. May I have a motion to accept the attorney's recommendations?
Motion to accept the...
A second?